Welcome, everybody. We apologize that we were a few minutes late getting started. We had a raising of the Pride Progress flag outside City Hall prior to the start of this meeting. Today is Monday, June 2nd. I request the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
President?
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yara and Scalati.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here this evening. We had a closed session prior to this, uh, to this moment, and I'll invite the city attorney to report out on that closed session.
Thank you. No reportable action was taken in closed session this evening.
Thank you. Well, good evening and welcome to everyone, whether you're here in the chambers or watching online. We are so glad that you are here and hopefully you joined us outside for the flag raising. I like to start with recognizing our incredible city staff that keeps our city running so smoothly every single day. And I really want to recognize all the departments right now who are currently meeting the moment and responding to the issue of illegal vending that has been happening in the Canal neighborhood. This is an incredibly complex issue. It's going to take additional months of enforcement and education with the community, and it requires deep coordination with the county. So thank you to all the city staff and all the different departments that are working on this issue. We recognize that it's on top of all the other issues that you're already working on, and the council and the community are very grateful. We are already receiving emails that folks are very grateful about the attention to this issue. And this week, uh, is, this Friday, is Gun Violence Awareness Day, and there is a proclamation on the consent agenda. But I want to take a moment to underscore that the city recognizes this important work, not only with a proclamation with words, but through our active participation and the Marin County Gun Safety Collaborative. You've heard me speak about the collaborative from the dais for, well, for the two years that it's been in existence. So in addition to honoring the lives lost and impacted by gun violence, violence through the collaborative, we work alongside partners to implement real, community-based strategies that prevent harm and save lives. On this Friday, you can wear orange. It's literally called Wear Orange Day. It happens throughout the nation, and that's to show solidarity and support actions to end gun violence. And on Saturday, there'll be a walk across the Golden Gate Bridge, uh, also showing allyship with this issue. If you're interested, on Saturday at 11:00 a.m., you can be at the Marin Vista Point. There'll be some speeches, and then you can walk across the bridge. So, thank you for recognizing this is an important issue and continuing to lift up the work. Before we get to the business agenda, we include a land acknowledgement. This is, uh, in addition to the work that we do with the tribe on an ongoing basis. We thank the original caretakers of this land. San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Miwok people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria, and we honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. Thank you for being here. We have a packed agenda, and I will turn now to the city clerk to describe how people can participate in tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube for members of the public wishing to provide public comment, displayed on the podium and the projector as a timer to help you stay within your two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in, or if you're from outside of San Rafael. Viewers may request a reasonable accommodation to provide public comment virtually. For more information about that, or if you're experiencing any technical difficulties, you can email me at city.clerk@cityofsanfellow.org. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn to the city manager for the city manager's report.
Good evening, mayor, council, members of the community. I just, I wanted to start off by, um, not stealing the council's thunder, but I wanted to, um, make a, a few personal remarks about my appreciation for Janie Spar and for all of her, um, friends and comrades who've gathered together to create this new center right here in San Rafael. It's a remarkable body of work that she has, um, spearheaded and led for over forty years, and I'm really excited and incredibly grateful, um, as a proud mom to have, um, the support and leadership, um, for you bringing this beautiful new center to San Rafael. So, we're gonna do the whole proclamation in a minute, but I, I just wanted to make a few remarks directly to you, Janie. Thank you. Um, on the not-so-good news side, the, um, there's some traffic issues today, so just, um, noting that there are some emergency repairs on the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge happening, and, um, it will be like a one-way back and forth. It's expected to be completed by 8:00 p.m. this evening. Well, we can cross our fingers on that. Um, you can get updates on the 5on1.org, but it was pretty disruptive this afternoon, so, but, um, emergency repair is probably important for safety purposes, but wanted to make everyone aware. Um, the county of Marin has kicked off a youth e-bike safety campaign. Um, they're calling it E-Bikers Club. I think it's, it's, the messaging is geared toward, toward the youth. Um, you can find out more information at e-bikers.club. So, there's new rules. The county and some other agencies have adopted some, an e-bike ordinance with some regulations, and that will be coming forward. A version of that ordinance will be coming forward to this council on the 21st of July. We've got a ton of events. I'm just gonna mention a few highlights that are coming up in June. We've got the Second Annual Pride Walk Art Puzzle. So, the San Rafael Business Improvement District has this puzzle contest where you can find hidden words in the window and win prizes. Sounds really fun. And you can, that's the whole month. Started yesterday and goes through the end of the month. Um, the Marin Museum of Contemporary Art is, um, we're collaborating with on a sea level rise installation. So, our own Kate Hageman, the city's adaptation planner, tomorrow on June the 3rd, from 5:30 to 7:30 at 12:10 Fifth Avenue. There'll be a, a special exhibit, conversation on sea level rise and its impacts across our community. You can go to the marinmoca.org website to get more info. Um, the San Rafael Chamber Leadership Institute is, um, is convening a vendor market on June the 7th from 12 to 4. It will be at 711 Grand Avenue, and there'll be local vendors, um, food, entertainment, kind of family, all-ages event. So, we're really looking forward to that. The San Rafael Public Art, um, Public Library is having a Juneteenth event on June the 14th at 2:00 p.m. at our 1,001,009 Fourth Street, um, pop-up location, and, um, you can get more information at the City of San Rafael Library website about that. Uh, lastly, a couple of logistics for the summer. The summer, the city council summer meeting is, um, is, uh, a little different this summer, so I want to just walk through the dates. Uh, instead of meeting, uh, as usual, on the first and third Mondays, um, we'll have a special meeting on June 23rd. So, we won't have the third Wednesday in June, which would have been the 16th of June. We'll be meeting on June 23rd instead. Same time. I meant Monday. Instead of Monday the 16th, it'll be Monday the 23rd. Thank you, city attorney. Uh, and then the, and then the third Monday in July, July 21st, and the third Monday in August, August 18th. So, there'll be one council meeting in July, one council meeting in August. Um, also, City Hall will have some modified hours on Fridays, so from June 1st to the August 31st. City Hall services will be available Monday through Friday. The building will be closed here on Fridays during that period of time. We've done this for a few years now. It's an opportunity for staff to have some protected time to work on high-priority projects, enhance productivity. Members of the public can still receive services on Fridays. Staff will be available by appointment, by phone, through Teams, and there'll always be somebody here at City Hall in the city manager's office if, if there's a, you know, um, important, urgent point of contact needed. Community centers, libraries, parking services, public safety center and fire stations will remain, uh, you know, regular, um, regular hours. And then lastly, in observance of Juneteenth, City Hall and non-emergency operations will be closed on June 19th.
Thank you. I'll turn to my colleagues to report out of meetings that they've attended. I'll start with the vice mayor.
Thank you. I was pleased to substitute for the mayor at the Transportation Authority of Marin last two weeks ago. On the, we heard a report on the, um, bike sharing program. It is ramping up, um, and it's in its first, uh, six months of a two-year, um, pilot program, but, uh, most of the use is in San Rafael and in Larkspur. So, um, keep using those bikes. There are, um, special programs for the summer, $5 for a month. Um, so, um, keep that in mind. Um, I also attended the Marin Council, uh, no, Marin County Council, uh, the bayers and council members, um, meeting. That's, see, I'll, I'll get that figured out one of these days. Um, we had a great presentation, um, under the direction of the, uh, president Eli Hill on, uh, from, uh, State Senator McGuire, who, um, kicked off a very meaty, um, presentation filed by the Marine Community Services, um, uh, agency, uh, presentation on all the, all the good things that they do. Um, I, uh, and finally, I attended the Marin Transit Board Meeting this morning. Um, we approved our budget, um, for next year, which is balanced, although, um, the forecast for, in the five-to-ten year, um, uh, range looks, um, a little challenging. So, we will be taking it up in our strategic planning process that kicks off in September. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. Just have three items to report on, and they all have a theme. Uh, participated on the County Commission on Aging Panel, representing urban cities. I was joined with, um, uh, Nevada, and they put Sausalito with us. Go figure. Um, to the Homeless Policy Steering Committee for Older Adults, and San Rafael's Age-Friendly Strategic Planning Session.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. The meeting that I attended was the one that was mentioned by the vice mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Micah.
Yes, thank you. I attended an internal residence al parking permit, um, to, you know, to get ready for the meeting that we are going to have with our task force on Monday. Um, also attended the Marine Sea Level Rise and Steering Committee Joint Meeting. Uh, Mayor Kate was, uh, was attending with me, uh, to understand the requirements of SB 272, and also to identify opportunities for collaboration on R.S.A.P., which is the Regional Shoreline Adaptation Plan. And, uh, we have, like, two speakers from BCDC, and, um, we are just trying to figure out how all the counties in Marin, all the cities and towns in Marin County are going to collaborate, um, around sea level rise. Um, also attended the MCCMC meeting that was mentioned, and on June 7th, uh, there is, uh, an event in my neighborhood in Breathart, is the 2025 Breathart Community Art and Music Stroll from 2 to 5, and is the fifth annual arts, music, and craft focus event. So, there's going to be a lot of local artists and musicians, so it will be fun. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a few items to report out. I'm your representative on SMART, Sonoma Marin Area Rail Transit, and this week, we surpassed our goal of having 1 million riders in the past fiscal year. So, big, big milestone since its inception. And in addition, passenger service is now open to the new SMART Windsor Station. So, that has begun last weekend. So, SMART continues to chug along, pun intended. Um, at our last May meeting, we, uh, reviewed the draft budget, and if you're interested in commenting on it, it is still online, and it will, it is a balanced budget, uh, for both the pathways as well as for the ongoing construction. I also represent the city on TAM's Transportation Authority Marin Countywide Transportation Plan Ad-hoc Committee, and that's just what it sounds like. Last year, last two years, TAM spent two months, or two months, two years, creating a plan that looks at all of the county holistically in terms of transportation needs. So, the plan is done, and once you do the plan, how do you start with the implementation? So, I am one of the members of the ad hoc committee that will be brought to the bigger TAM board, and I will keep this, keep us all posted as we move to implementation. So, that was it. I think everyone's reported out on their, um, meetings. If you would like to, if the public would like to comment on the city manager or any of the council member reports, now is your opportunity. Not seeing any. I'm gonna close the public comment and move right along to the consent agenda. There are any items that my colleagues would like to hold from the consent agenda, right to my left. Not seeing any items to be held. I, if the public would like to give any comments, it's a pretty jam-packed consent agenda. It's 4A through 4J. So, if you'd like to comment on any of the items 4A through 4J, now is your opportunity. And I will, um, state that you'll have an opportunity if you want to provide comment on the present, presentation, the proclamation to Doc, um, Dr. Spar. That will be next. But if there's any other items you'd like to comment on. Okay, I will bring it back to the council for a motion on the consent agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second?
It moved in seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yara and Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. So, before the council comes down and, and has the presentation of the proclamation, we do invite public comment on the proclamation for Dr. Spar. So, if you'd like to make any comments, now would be the moment. Okay, we will, uh, my colleagues, meet me down below. Please join me right here. I'm going to talk about you. Here, come stand right here and face this way, so that way the camera, as well as everyone else, can see you. So, this is a proclamation and recognition of you, Reverend Dr. Jane, Janie Adams Spar. Whereas you have, you're affectionately known as Janie, you are a Presbyterian minister who has dedicated her life to advocating for justice and equality, particularly for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQIA+ community. And whereas in 1982, you co-founded the Ministry of Light, later known as the Spectrum Center for Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Concerns in Marin County, California, where she served as an executive director for over a decade, establishing vital programs such as the Marin AIDS Project, PFLAG Marin, and Youth and Family Support. And whereas in 1991, Dr. Spar was called to serve as one of four co-pastors at a downtown United Presbyterian Church in Rochester, New York, but was denied the position by the Presbyterian Church Highest Court due to her sexual orientation, leading to the formation of, quote, "that all may freely serve," an initiative advocating for inclusivity within the church. And whereas in 2015, the Spectrum Center merged with the Marin AIDS Project to form the Spar Center, a nonprofit named in her honor, which provided lifesaving support services, community education, advocacy for LGBTQIA+ individuals and people living with and affected by HIV in Marin County. And whereas in 2025, Dr. Spar has been instrumental in the formation of the Marin LGBTQIA+ Center, which recently celebrated its opening at the Multicultural Center of Marin. And whereas her unwavering dedication to justice, her pioneering role in the LGBTQIA ministry, and her compassionate leadership have inspired countless individuals and contributed significantly to advancements of civil rights and inclusion within religious communities. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of San Rafael recognize and honor you for your extraordinary contributions to social justice, your courageous advocacy for LGBTQIA+ rights within the faith community, and her enduring legacy of compassion, resilience, and transformative, transformative leadership. And I'll just say that that was your bio, but what really stood out for me is that this has not only been your life calling, and you have shown up from the beginning with your values firmly intact and helping those who have not been seen or not been loved in the way that you knew that they should be loved, and that made that your life work. And we are so honored and so delighted that you are here in San Rafael. Congratulations.
Would you like to say a few words? Can I?
Sure.
Of course, you can say a few words.
So, we just found this out yesterday. Um, so, I'm, um, thank you for caring. Thank you for helping us be visible. For, there is a thing in this country now called erasure, and our people are being erased, and our children are being erased, and our transgender families are being told that they don't know any better. They're being told that God doesn't love them, that they're not good people. And so, every time that is said, we have a responsibility to stand up and be visible and say no more. I want to tell you, um, I'll just, a story here. When we started this, some fifty, really, years ago it started, and then the Spar Center and so on, but it was always the people. Who started it was always the people who wanted to say, "My child matters." You know, and now we use the word queer, you know, and people go, "Oh, don't say that word." People my age used to be called and beat up for it. But our children reclaimed it, and they said, "We're here, we're queer, and we're going shopping." and we're going shopping. And they taught us things like non-binary, and that we have been locked in what is male and what is female. And they have helped us see the fluidity of gender, which we all have inside of us. And I think we're all transgender, in a way. And that has been so freeing for so many people. So we're here to stand for them, to be for them, for those that are told, no, you can't be who you are. And it's nasty stuff. It's been said for a long, long time. But we're proud to be who we are. We like who we are. And the most terrible thing is to have joy about who we are, because there's nothing more obnoxious than a joyful queer person. It kind of changes people's mind. So I tell you one story. In the beginning, some 50 years ago, in Rafael, you would love this, a young woman called me from Marin Academy, and she said, hi, my name's Marla. I think I'm a lesbian. I want to meet a lesbian. Are you a lesbian? I said, yes, I am. So she came down, and she began a group called Rainbow's End. And all these kids began to come, and this is what we said. We don't care what your sexual orientation is. What matters is that you like yourself. And so they came, lots and lots of kids came. And it was so thrilling to see them. One kid flew in the door, and he said, my dad and mother just flew me out of the house. They threw all my things on the lawn, and they said to us, they said to me, so what's so great about being gay? And you know what they did? They got up in the room, and they held him for a long time. And he cried, and he cried, and he cried. They raised him to love who he is. So that's what we're doing every day, just loving them into being who they are. So Marla met Tiffany in that youth group some 40 years ago. In August 31st, their names are not now Marla and Tiff, their names are Mar and Tiff, because they have seen the fluidity of their gender. And I am having the honor, after 40-some years of doing their wedding in Seattle with a wonderful rabbi. So sometimes, these stories work out really well. And they said, Janie, we figured after 39 years, we kind of know that we really love each other, and we want to be together. So that's what's happened here in San Rafael. It's been great. So thank you so much for caring.
Thank you. We are going to move into our public hearings. The first item is military equipment use, and I see that Chief Spiller has joined us. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the city council. So the next item on the agenda that the police department is here to report on is our military equipment annual reporting pursuant to Assembly Bill 481, which is about three years old now. The department is required to report to the governing body, to the city council, on our use, utilization, and potential procurement of military equipment as defined in the legislation in the government code. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant Everly, who's going to present tonight's staff report.
Good evening, Mayor.
Take them up. Yep, there you go.
Forgot myself. I'm sorry. I should be used to this by now. Good evening, Mayor Kate and council members. My name is Scott Everly, a lieutenant with the police department. If you give me one second, I can share my screen. Sorry about that. Good evening again. It is my honor to present to you the 2024 San Rafael Police Department Military Equipment Annual Report, and to present a proposal to acquire and implement a drone as first responder program. Tonight, we will go over the annual report. We will go over some, the new equipment requests, community feedback, safeguards and policy, the fiscal impact, and staff recommendation. As a reminder, Assembly Bill 481 was enacted in 2021 and requires local governing bodies to approve and annually review law enforcement policies and procedures regarding the use of military equipment. In 2022, this council adopted Ordinance 2007, establishing Policy 706, and the framework for transparency and accountability. Tonight, you now have the opportunity to review the annual report, evaluate compliance, and to approve or not approve any new acquisitions that fall under the definition of military equipment. As required by legislation, the report that is attached to your staff report includes a summary of how the equipment was used, a summary of any complaints, the results of any internal audits, costs associated for each type of military equipment, the quantity of each type of military equipment, and any military equipment the law enforcement agency intends to acquire next year. With those requirements in mind, I'd like to highlight some of the deployments we had this past year. Much, while much of the equipment was used for training purposes, we did have 13 callouts of the Marin County Sheriff's Department drone. We utilized the armored rescue vehicle twice, and we had three uses of the less-than-lethal impact device. Each of those incidents mentioned above is documented in your annual report, and please feel free to reach out at the end of my presentations if you have any questions or require any further clarification. Having read where this equipment is deployed, it is also important to understand how we keep track and ensure strict adherence to the regulations. And I am pleased to report that we have had zero complaints regarding military equipment in both 2023 and 2024, and an internal review revealed no violations regarding military equipment in both of those years. I also want to emphasize that our police department does not participate in the federal 1033 program, which is the utilization of actual military equipment from the military. So in other words, the police department doesn't possess any equipment that does or used to belong to our armed forces. And with that, it is important to clarify that although legislation does use the term military equipment through AB 481, we genuinely view and utilize the items that are detailed in your report as essential safety equipment. The full 2024 equipment inventory list is attached to your staff report, and it includes the equipment quantities, annual costs, funding sources, and any proposed acquisitions. Staff has also reviewed Policy 706 and found it to be effective and up to date, and requiring no changes at this time. In accordance with department policy and legislation, we are also here tonight to seek approval for the addition of new equipment, specifically two drones, to support a drone as a first responder program. This equipment is classified under Category 1 in the definition of military equipment. Before I get into the DFR program, I want to explain that there are two separate models to drone deployment. The first is the tactical drone deployment, often referred to as a trunk-based model. This approach involves launching a drone from the field, typically out of a patrol vehicle. And I'll say it is a valuable tool. We've used it 13 times last year, and we believe that it remains an important resource and a good use of drone. Although with any deployment, the officer would have to respond to the scene, open up their trunk, take the trunk out, put in the battery, and then set it up, and then lift it off. So the response times don't really get addressed. In contrast, the second option, and why we are here tonight, is the drone as a first responder program, which offers significant advantages. The DFR system integrates directly with our computer-aided dispatch system, allowing drones to automatically deploy to the location of a call, either using an address or the GPS coordinates found from the actual 911 call. This will dramatically improve response times and enhance situational awareness before even officers arrive at the scene. Both drones will be strategically stationed to ensure optimal response times for downtown San Rafael proper and northern San Rafael and the Terre Linda neighborhood. The drones are capable of reaching speeds up to 53 miles an hour and have a flight time of over 42 minutes. Besides the speed and battery life and sustainability of the drones up in the air, there are three other main advantages that I wanted to cover tonight. The first, as I touched on a little bit, was response times. In the graphic before you shows our previous response times in 2023 and in 2024. And you can see that we are slightly improving, almost 3% from 5 minutes and 49 seconds to an average of 5 minutes and 39 seconds. We still believe we can do a lot better. 5 minutes and 30-plus seconds is a long time to get to a Priority 1 call. And we believe through data and other experiences from other police departments that we can cut this response times by over 50%. Second reason is we can clear calls for service. Calls can be cleared before police officers arrive on scene and determine the need of a police response or not, and we can locate subjects much more efficiently and effectively. Here are some real-time examples of response times enhancement. So I was able to get in contact with many police departments that are using the DFR program. And for example, Alhambro PD, Redondo Beach Police Department, Elk Grove Police Department, all have reduced their response times by at least 60%, while Chula Vista PD and Santa Clara Sheriff's Office reports getting to majority of their calls for service in under 2 minutes. I also want to talk about the enhanced situational awareness that the drone or the DFO program will bring to San Rafael. One is the night vision. Up on the screen, you see a comparison of what the FLOC system night vision is capable of compared to the competitors, so that we are able to fly it efficiently and effectively at night. There is also a 400-time zoom and thermal imaging capabilities, which I hope to show you at the end of this presentation in a video demonstration. Having explored the range of capabilities these drones possess, I would like to point out a critical feature that enhances operational safety and situational awareness. It's the Automatic Dependent Surveillance/Broadcast, or ADS-B, system, is a highly technical safety device that is included with this program, and it's designed for collision avoidance between the drone and other aircraft. It is able to monitor all aircraft that are flying into San Rafael airspace, and when the aircraft comes within one mile of the drone, the pilot will receive a very loud tone, switch to this screen, and show where that aircraft is. If the aircraft comes within a half a mile of our drone, the drone will automatically start to slowly descend, where the pilot can take over and land it in a safe area. All of these operational capabilities, including the safety features, are ultimately geared towards supporting critical missions. On the screen are some of the examples where drones would be deployed. And it is important to note that drones will only be deployed in response to calls for service that ordinarily or would ordinarily justify a police officer going anyways. These drones are going to be used for real-time aerial observations to support officer response and safety, verification of calls for service before the officers arrive on scene, and documentation of crime scenes, as well as operations in hazardous or hard-to-reach areas, such as woodland and the open space areas. As you know, San Rafael has a lot of open space areas, and a drone would be highly effective to our department and the fire department. Importantly, drones will not be used for random surveillance or be weaponized. I want to emphasize that. It's in our policy, the drones will not be used for surveillance purposes. All operations will follow both local SRPD Policy 606 and the federal FAA regulations. Understanding the practical applications of these deployments is vital. But equally important is the ongoing dialogue within the community we serve. This brings us to the critical topic of public engagement, addressing the community concerns and incorporating feedback. There were two recent opportunities for the police department to present information about drones to the public during the regular Police Advisory and Accountability Committee meetings, one in November of 2024, and the other one in April of just this last year. Both meetings included professional translation services to ensure that all community members had the opportunity to share their input. At the April 16, 2025 PAC meeting, it also served as our community meeting specifically addressing the 2024 San Rafael Military Equipment Annual Report. Key highlights from that meeting were that 12 community members provided public comment. 10 of those speakers supported the DFR program, including crime victims. 10 PAC members, or, excuse me, the PAC members voted unanimously 7 to 0 in favor of SRPD implementing the DFR program. I want to reiterate, I recognize and I hear the concerns around drones that were brought up at the PAC community meetings in November and in the meeting in April. Following a thorough review of both those meetings, we revisited all community feedback and recognized that these are the same concerns that are echoed in other communities, not just in San Rafael. Each question and concern has been thoughtfully addressed and documented in the staff report before you today, and our policy is based on those concerns. Building on our commitment to public engagement, a cornerstone of responsible operations, is accountability and transparency. We demonstrate this by publicly sharing our drone deployment data, which you can see on the following two slides. This is the FLOC aerodome software system that we are proposing to enter into contract with. This is a dashboard from Elk Grove Police Department. On the top right portion of the screen is an adjustable date range, where the community can go in and pick whatever date they want to find out when the drones or what the drones were responding to. It has the amount of drones that were deployed, reduction of response times, and then the top types of calls. Also, as part of the transparency tab, is we will post the flight pass. I want to be specific, though, we are not going to post addresses of where the calls for service were. We're going to protect any personal identifying information, but this gives the community an idea of where the drone was flown, when the drone was flown, and what the reason the drone was flown for. Sorry. Sorry. Yeah. It sounded good in my head.
Okay, ours too.
If I could toggle real quick to... Okay. Here is a video of when the FLOC representatives came to the PSC and demonstrated the drone in action. And it is a long video, so I'm going to fast forward to a couple of key moments. The first one was a call for service, that, an actual call for service, where there was, I think it was smoke smelt at the building above Starbucks on Third Street, and the fire department was deployed, and we decided to go out there and give them a hand. This is a demonstration, a little bit of the Zoom capabilities. This drone right- This drone right now is over probably around four hundred feet up in the sky. And in a minute, it will show you the the thermal imaging capabilities. And you will be able to see on the lighter spots, the hotspots. And we were able to tell. And then there's another filter that was used for thermal imaging. And we were able to communicate directly with the fire department and let them know that we also did not detect any thermal or heat in that area. Next, I want to show you the zoom capabilities. So this is just an officer that is on a a call for service. And I want you to take a look at the zoom capabilities. That from four hundred feet up, if this was suspect someone we're looking for, we would be able to see if there was a weapon in that hand. And probably not only if there was weapon, what type of weapon would be in that hand? So, switch back. Okay. As you can see, just from that short demonstration, that this drone has a lot of enhanced um, features that would definitely greatly contribute to the effectiveness of the police department and the function. Um, we've covered a lot of ground tonight, from the stringent A B four-eight-one requirements to the impressive capabilities of a D F R program, how the D F R program would be invaluable asset that enhances public safety, response times, and leverages technology. Crucially, we have also addressed the vital importance of public engagements, community concerns, and feedback by drafting our policy around such concerns and demonstrating our commitment to transparency by publicly posting our deployment data. With all of this information reviews reviewed, and to let you know that funding has been successfully secured in our budget from the reoccurring general fund appropriations, we present the council three options for consideration alongside alongside staff's recommendation. Option one would be to adopt the resolution. Two, adopt a revised resolution with changes. And three, do not adopt the resolution. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution that will do two things. Renew the ordinance approving the Santa Fel Police Department's military equipment use policy and authorize the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with Flock Group Incorporated for the lease and installation of two unmanned aerial systems or drones as first responders for a thirty-six-month term in the amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. Thank you very much for the time. I'm sorry for the tongue twisting, but I am available for any questions that you have.
Thank you, Lieutenant Everly. I will see if there are any questions that the council may have. I will start the vice mayor.
Yes, questions. Uh, great program. I'm glad that I have no questions on your military equipment use, on your proposal for the drones as first responders. I see the benefits. I'm also mildly alarmed by some of the um, uh, downsides. I'd like to ask you about those. You mentioned weaponizing. Um, current worldwide news shows the value of drones in as weapons. What is your policy? How are you going to ensure that nothing is ever attached to this particular drone to make it a weapon?
It is stated in our policy that it it will never be weaponized. And the Flock company that we are also contracted with, they don't have any such feature that it would add or can you can attach to the drone.
Okay, so it's not readily, it cannot readily be converted?
Correct.
Excellent. Okay.
Also, if I could just add, uh, any modifications to a drone program would be a requirement in our annual reporting to this body. So if those concerns continue to persist or if you had a new chief who went crazy with the drone program, all of that would come to this body annually.
Okay, great. All right. Next question. Drones, you said that they can interact with the dispatch system on to get the address immediately. Can they also interact with the other Flock system that we have on on? And can we send them out chasing?
Yes. Yes, they're working on that. It might be in effect right now. When they came and did the demonstration, they said it was going to be in effect very shortly. That other system, the A L P R system, Automated License Plate Reader System communicates with our CAD. So our CAD would then directly communicate with our drone. Coming up, it'll be if the drone was flying um, and an A L P R hit, so to speak, happened. Then while the pilot was flying that drone, there would be like a green box if they were flying over that area where the stolen vehicle is or the suspected vehicle is.
So a human being would be notified of this and would make a decision as to whether or not the drone is redirected?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, two out of three. Now let's now now I move on to privacy. Um, specifically, what are you going to do with the videos of the you showed the path that they go on? What if they on are responding to a call at location A? And on the way to location A, they pass over different houses, places of business, different things, uh, different locations where there may or may not be unlawful activity going on or any kind of activity?
A great, great question. Um, it's also, I think, a data question. Uh, so our video is going to be held on the same type of server as the A L P R footage for thirty days. So it'll be the same type of policy there. If the video that we take with the drone program becomes evidence, then we will download that to our evidence dot com and then retention um, policy would would come into play depending on what type of crime it is.
And will that be the entire path of the drone and everything that the drone may have seen on its way out to its destination?
Yes, it would. If if I maybe can quell your concerns if that would ever be released to the public, it we would, um, we have, um, redaction software so that if it went over somebody's house and there was a P R A because it was a crime case and then that video became publicly available per P R A laws, we would go in and redact everything that had P I N I. So addresses, faces, similar to, I guess, the way to put it, when the the Google Maps car comes by and everything gets redacted out, it would be similar to that.
Actually, I was more concerned about you all reviewing that on that video. Um, is it your plan to review that video to see if there were other unlawful activities recorded on that path?
Not unless it was associated to the crime we were responding to. So there's a camera up, like operational protocol for the device. Um, you know, the camera is pretty powerful. So as soon as the uh, vehicle is within range, the camera would be focused on the destination that the the U A V is responding to. Uh, so we're not looking down on other people along the way. We're we're either the camera up philosophy is on the horizon or focused on the target address as identified in the computer-aided dispatch system. So we're not really looking in backyards and intersections and things like that along the way. As soon as the drone is at altitude, it focuses the the extremely powerful camera focuses on the target location and we're not looking at other things on the way.
And that's great. And then when it gets to the target location, it's looking for your officer or or there's a human being telling it what to look at?
Correct. There is. There is always a pilot on the other end controlling. Correct.
Very good. Three checks.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kurtz, go ahead.
I also have a couple of questions. Thank you. Love advanced technology. Yay. Um, sort of in line with that of operating the drone, so it can get dispatched through dispatch. But then there's actually somebody who is the operator. And that sort of leads into my question around training. How many people on in the department would be actually trained to operate?
That is a great question, Councilmember. So we are working through the standard operating procedures right now. We recently visited Elk Grove P D. They gave us a lot of insight on how to start up a drone program. They did not recommend making everybody a pilot. So we're going to start small with the goal of at least one pilot per shift so that if a call happens during twenty-four-seven, seven days a week, at least somebody will be. So that would be probably in the area of five to maybe ten at the most pilots to start off with.
Okay, great. And not sure how to ask this question. So on your list, I don't on of how the drone could be potentially used, did you have evacuations?
It could be definitely used. And I didn't mean for that list to be all-inclusive. I'm sorry.
I know. That's yeah, exactly. That was sort of where I was thinking that I could see it as we've talked about evacuations in the event of fire. Um, that a drone might be really helpful in that situation. And I follow on question to that, would our police drone meet our fire department drone?
They would be friends. Yes. They would be friends. You can deploy both drones at the same time. We have, we would have a different interface. Their interface would probably directly communicate to whatever laptop or remote control that they're working with. But the good thing about police and fires, we have become really good at emergency operation centers. So we would be stationed with a fire commander, with a police commander, so we would communicate what we were all seeing.
That's great. Um, and then another question is actually on the the cost of it. Was there a discussion around this? These costs are purchase. Is there a or is this lease?
It is lease, just just like the A L P R system, which is actually an added benefit, in my opinion.
Yes.
As technology progresses, they will update. If there's new hardware, they will give us new hardware.
That's great. Literally every day will be up. Yeah. So that's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jaren Sculatti. Questions?
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation and I'm excited to hear um, that you were presenting to the PAC team. So very thankful for them as well and all the great questions they had. Um, so you mentioned the area of service, um, and I think I know the answer, but just to clarify, it was downtown and Northgate. Is it downtown or does it extend to other neighborhoods like the canal?
Yes, and I apologize for the way I probably presented that. We have the very large hill right behind us. So we want to make response times as efficient as possible. So we'll probably station the first drone um, above the P S E. That can reach in the in the demo day, it got out to Morphew or where the the yard is in under three minutes. But the camera zoom, as the chief was talking about, in under thirty seconds. So as the drone reached up, we were able to zoom in all the way to the yard and get there very quickly. The second location up in Terre Linda, we have yet to determine. Um, we want to meet with the experts from Flock and from the business owners and probably the fire department up there where we might station it.
Thank you. Um, my other question is, I think you also answered it. Um, having two drones, because you are going to have one person trained per shift, I assume that you can only have one drone at a time.
You can actually deploy two drones at a time.
With the same?
With the same, you with the same pilot. Um, you need FAA waivers and um, the Flock group will apply and obtain and work with our city attorney to get those necessary waivers.
Okay, great. Um, and that's my other question. Um, with all these drones, we have our police, the county is going to have their drones, and then now people are just having drones. Um, so is there like a regulation on how? Because you talk about airplanes. Uh, but how about other drones in the area?
There are regulations regulated by the FAA that regulate drones. Um, we have a policy concerning our drone. And if someone were to complain about a certain drone hovering over a spot that they shouldn't be hovering, we would definitely, excuse me, investigate that. There's also protective airspace. So we also learned that our P S E is a protected airspace. A private person cannot fly their drone over our P S E just as they can't fly it over the airport. Um, so as I said, as the complaints come in, we would deal with them. But yeah, we don't have kind of a magic wand to turn off.
Um, my other question is, um, can they speak Spanish or other languages?
They can speak any language that the pilot wants to speak. So it does have the capabilities of having a speaker. So if we were to use it in a crisis situation, we can deploy the drone close enough and we can get any translator on the other end of that. They don't have to be on the scene. They don't have to be in the city. They don't have to be in the state, which is so great about this software.
Great. Okay, and my last one, I know that we are talking about no random surveillance or weaponize it. That's a twist, tongue twist. Um, and but you mentioned that we are that they are going to be following the police and the federal regulations. So thinking about federal regulations, thinking about ICE, in which will there be like a a case where we are required to, you know, use the drones for ICE or anything like that?
I'm happy to answer that one. No, we don't cooperate with or participate any uh, um, immigration operations with ICE or Department of Homeland Security. So we would not utilize this tool to advance one of their investigations or a removal operation.
Wonderful. Okay, no more questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill, any questions?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Kate. I have six questions. Um, on the public portal, is it only looking back, say, twenty-four hours in the past or is it live?
It's customizable. So in the top right-hand corner, there is a date range. So it's by days. You could do by days. You can do by month. You can do by year. The slide that I brought up there was the last year of Elk Grove. So whoever's looking at it can customize it to whatever date frame they want.
I guess what I mean is, um, if someone were sitting at their computer, they could say, where's the drone right now? And it would say it's parked at P S E or or is it is it delayed on the?
I'm sorry, there is a delay. Yes, there would be probably the the next shift or in the next day. It would be definitely after the incident is resolved.
Okay, thank you.
The operator is actually required to file a flight plan and then that's when it gets uploaded into the system. So the operator who manipulated the device, who flew the drone, who utilized the camera, uh, they file a flight plan for each deployment and then that integrates with the transparency information.
So but but it would be delayed, say, by twenty-four hours?
Probably at least.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Uh, and then, uh, with respect to fireworks, I just as the just we could just try to tabletop that scenario here. Um, so if you get a complaint for fireworks, would the drone then go out and then say, okay, there's an address, it's going to go and try to see if someone's going to set off more? And I'm just trying to imagine how that could.
Exactly. Um, Elk Grove Police Department has a great case study, if you ever want to look it up. And they had a just not unique to our city. They also had a real problem with fireworks. And they deployed their fireworks, I think, or their drone last year on a fireworks call and was able to take pictures of the person that was lighting off the fireworks and identify that person and then issue them a fine.
Thank you. Um, you mentioned, uh, computer-aided dispatch integration. Is that out of the box? It'll just it just easily plugs into our CAD or is it something that would take more time and money?
No more money. No more money. Um, the Flock is integrated with our R I M's system, so they're familiar with it. Um, we have brought in our digital services early on in the process in looking into drones. So they're well more versed to talk about that than I am, but I can tell you that it's it will be easy.
Okay, thank you. And I um, I know that uh, police and fire work very closely together. As an asset, though, uh, it's these assets are operated and managed by police. Um, but that because it's coming through dispatch, a judgment can be made to immediately send the the drone out to a fire response. Is that right?
Absolutely. And just because we have separate drones, we we still respond to the same calls. So when there's a fire, police go. When there's a major accident with injuries, the police go. So we would probably already be responding. But if there was something, even a wildland fire, we we would be, we'd go to that as well. So if there was something that we weren't dispatched to and fire needed our drone, yes, we would be able to use that.
Um, and then, uh, similar, you mentioned around data storage policy um, being similar to the automatic license plate reader um, program. Is this one, does this one have a follow a similar suit of, say, a thirty-day expunge after the fact unless there's some sort of reason for an investigation and then it could be held further?
Absolutely correct. And I do want to just emphasize on the data portion of it. It's in your staff report. Unlike the A L P R system, Flock has no access to our videos, none whatsoever. We are the sole proprietor of all of our videos. So nobody can get it to for us.
And then my final question is, do we know that we're getting a good deal?
I think we're getting a great deal, Councilmember Will.
Yeah, well, I saw on there that that they're giving us one for free for two years. But um, I'm just curious because all of this is uh, public record and all the other jurisdictions that are getting a deal with Flock. I just want to make sure we're at least in line or maybe better.
We're we're slightly better in my. We're, we're slightly better, in my opinion.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, until now, until, yeah. Take your testimony on face value. Thank you.
Thank you, I just have two questions. So from your report, it looks like the county has already been using this, using the drone system, so I'm curious if they have any learnings. I know that they're literally in the same pond that we're in, but what they might have told us in developing our own program?
Yeah, they have been, great question, Mayor Kate, they have been using it from the trunk or the tactical-based model, so their drones live in the deputy's patrol cars. And that's all dictates if the deputy is on duty, if they're on duty at that time, if they're busy on another call, whereas our program is slightly different, that this drone will be able to deploy when necessary. But we did talk with them, confer with them about just some logistical, storage, hardware issues, and they gave us some good advice.
Okay, so that's one of the reasons why you're suggesting a different program than the one they've used, because of limitations of that one. So again, another question around the county, so last year, it looked like there was a request for us to, SRPD to use it thirteen times, wasn't available. Do you think it'll be available, do you think we will use it more often? Because you're probably doing the requests in those really extreme situations, so when you report out next year, probably won't be thirteen, it might be, I don't know what that number would, would be.
Yeah, for example, the Elk Grove, we're not as busy as Elk Grove, but Elk Grove on their stat deployed their drones one thousand one hundred and eight times in a year, so I, I don't know if we'll get that high.
Right.
I doubt it, but we will use it a lot more, yes.
Okay, which leads to my last question. So we're going to have a highly functioning, better system than what the county has, and we reached out to them to use their system. Do you envision a scenario when they'll start reaching out to the city of San Rafael to use our drones? And if so, when would we let them, would we charge them, or is this only going to be San Rafael only, and we won't do that? Because I know we do a shared response.
The difference with ours is greater limitations on the, the fly time, because ours is attached to a dock somewhere that's stationary within the city of San Rafael. It will be much harder to deploy our drone to, say, Novato, because if we only have forty-two minutes of flying time, it's going to take five to ten minutes to get up there, and then five to ten minutes to get back. So our capabilities are going to be far less, but there are a lot of unincorporated areas within our jurisdiction that we'd be more than happy to provide our services to help them out.
Okay, so we're not charging them to use our?
Yeah, that was the second half of your question. So they've been helping us for years, and, you know, we, all of the chief executives in the county meet regularly, we have a pretty strong working relationship, and we all rely on neighbor helping neighbor, that's the spirit of mutual aid, so we would continue to support our partner if our technology was in a position to do so.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Oh, Councilmember Hill, another question.
One more question. I know you're still working through operating procedures on, on this, but I'm imagining that if, that if, on any given shift, would this, might it be that a one officer who would normally be on patrol might be stationed there, or otherwise, if no, if there's no pilots, we wouldn't be able to respond, is?
Great, great question, and we, we thought about that long and hard. That officer would probably, if they're in their vehicle, they would not have to drive all the way back to the station. We tested it out in our mobile dispatch terminals in the cars. They should just pull over and deploy the drone, so they can do it right away. If by chance it's a day shift, or there's a detective at the station that's a pilot, they would get on the air and say, we could take over drone capabilities.
Gotcha, so you could actually transition between pilots. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Excellent questions by the council. And now I will open up the public comment portion. If you have questions or any input you'd like to provide on this item, we would like to hear it. You're invited, but not required, to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in. Welcome.
My name is Sharon Adema. I live in the Montecito area of San Rafael. So as I understand your presentation, you have used county drones thirteen times this year, right? So it's once a month, a little more. So needing our own drone suggests incredible breakdown in trust of the citizens of San Rafael, that you're going to need so much more, fifty, five hundred thousand dollars more surveillance than we have now. Like, going from one a month to needing one, our own, two, two of our own. So to, to me, it represents a shocking and heartbreaking breakdown of trust in, in the citizens of this city. And if we are so evil, on what basis would we trust you to use these morally? You say, oh, it's in the guidelines, oh, we wouldn't do that. But if you don't trust us to this extent, I mean, I know there's crime, and I'm sorry about that, and it takes you five minutes, and I'm sorry that, about that. But this represents a huge breakdown in trust, which makes me sad. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on this item?
Good evening, Mayor Kate, good evening, council. My name is Daryush, and I serve as the vice chair on the PAC committee. Also, I'm on the board of San Rafael Chamber of Commerce, also board of directors of the Homeowners Association, the Peacock Gap. I'm also a small business owner in East San Rafael, in the Canal neighborhood. I have two kids that attend school, one of them at Davidson Middle School, and I also reside in San Rafael. Upon speaking to our committee members, I've learned the top three issues in my districts are safety, economic vitality, traffic, and road infrastructure. By serving on PAC, I've gone on police ride-alongs, and I've attended oral board, which is a fancy name for interviewing potential applicants for police department. On ride-alongs, I've learned that at times, there's lots of traffic to get from one end of San Rafael to another end. As we know, first responders, not just police, but also the fire department, put their lives in danger by responding to emergency, and by having drones, we can reduce this risk. Furthermore, less car and noise traffic are created when a drone responds rather than a police car, and also less air pollution. For example, on a day like this, when we're having this emergency issue on the bridge, there's so much traffic, it took me forty-three minutes to get from Terre Linda to here. I imagine if there's an emergency happening, guess what we need? The drones. By serving on the Chamber of Commerce, I've learned that we can promote more confidence to our business community by having a safer city that's advanced and take forward. When it comes to fighting crime and providing safety, I myself, a business owner, hires employees from Dominican University and Canal, and I have learned similar feedbacks from, from them. In fact, in one of our PAC meetings, we heard from the voices of Canal, and they were strongly in favor of drones. We heard that they were firsthand victims of crime, and they were in favor of police presence, especially drones. Given San Rafael's geographic, there are many neighborhoods that are far away from police and fire department, and with the potential on sea level rising and wildfires, which is on the top ten lists of our residents, we need drones to provide accurate and detailed information to our first responders.
If you could wrap up.
In order to provide safety, regain confidence with business owners, and to reduce, reduce traffic. Sorry.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, city council. Drones. I don't know, it, it sounds like the drone would enable you to not waste an officer's time on a call if, in fact, the drone went to the location and found that there was nothing to respond to, so that, that would save them the wasted time. But it doesn't replace the need for an officer to go to that location if there is, in fact, something that requires their attention. So I'm just trying to understand the purpose of the drone. Again, I don't know the workload of the, the police department, I don't know what, the question is, what would constitute a reasonable request to say, oh, I need to send a drone there? There's something that important, since I only have two, and I doubt if you're scheduling crime to say, well, we can only do a certain amount of crime during a particular day, so please schedule those with us. No, they all seem to happen in, in bundles, and my guess is they happen in, in the evening. Anyway, so how, how would you manage that? How would you say, oh, I have two drones, how do I send them out, and when do I send them out? Is it a noise complaint? Am I going to send a drone? No, that doesn't make any sense. Is shots fired? That sounds like something the drone should be involved with. So I, I don't know how you triage that. So that's one question. There was, there was a statement about procedures, the procedures are not fully fleshed out, and it, it seems to, the experience that you're about to have will enable you to change those procedures to reflect the reality. And I wonder if city council will be informed of all the procedures, just to make sure that anything that might be changed would be, well, I'm not sure we want to do that, that kind of a communication. I hope you have that in there. The other one is battery life. You've mentioned battery life, and then, and then, and I'm asking, is there a range issue? Oh, can I fly this all the way to Sausalito? Can I fly it to West Marin? Is there a restriction like that? Again, I realize I'm out of time.
Thank you. Thank you for your questions. We'll have staff answer them after the public comment. Anyone have any other comments on this item?
Okay, not seen any, I'm going to close the public comment. And what I heard was concern about the, the use of surveillance and what that means in terms of the trust of the residents, and I really think that folds into the usage of the, the drone, so maybe you could speak to that again. How is it requested? How was, how was it deployed? The deploy, deployment criteria? If there are procedure changes, do they go to council? How does that communicated to the community? And then are there range issues? And I know that some of this you might have already provided, but there was a lot of information, so if you could just, even if you're repeating what you've already shared.
Certainly. So the first question was, we've utilized the sheriff's drone, requested the sheriff's drone or an outside agency drone thirteen times. Not in every case were they available, but we made thirteen requests. This is not our equipment nor our personnel that's utilizing them, so we're a little bit more, we're considerably more judicious in making the request, because it impacts another organization, their equipment, their availability of their officers or deputies. We, our utilization of the equipment would be a much greater volume. You know, some examples that were cited that don't necessarily involve a crime, but can provide situational awareness for our responders, including fire. Things like collisions, if you, you know, it's not unusual for the police department to get report of a rollover collision at the corner of whatever and whatever. Our officers, a couple of them, along with fire potentially, are rolling lights and sirens across town, putting an increased amount of time between the response and their arrival, when the drone could deploy, have eyes on, and potentially create an opportunity for us to reduce that more risky response. You know, public safety emergencies, Councilmember Kurtz made reference to evacuations and things like that. There's a number of different public safety emergencies that could be utilized, including what we've made a lot of reference to tonight, and those are just-occurred crime incidents. A lot of everything that we do is centered on building public trust, and, you know, it's a significant concern of mine as your chief, and the work that we put into hearing from the community and developing the policy, which is included in your packet, Policy 606 specifically addresses the deployment and all of our utilization of a potential drone, drone program. So the development of that policy specifically addressed all of those concerns that were listed in Lieutenant Everly's PowerPoint. The question of, you know, if, you know, when would we deploy, and what do we deploy to? The policy dictates what we can respond to, and it's the field supervisor or the watch commander's determination of whether they will actually launch or not. And that depends on pilot availability, other calls for service, and those types of things, but ultimately comes down to the watch commander's responsibility. And then, as I said, the procedures that were mentioned is codified in our policy, it's included in your packet and available to the public on our transparency tab. And the issues of range issues, you know, it's a little bit of a delta, you know, Lieutenant Everly shared, you know, it can travel at up to forty-two miles, or forty-two minutes, up to fifty-three miles an hour. There's some factors that weigh into that. If it's super, super windy, a gyroscopically stabilized unmanned aircraft takes a lot more energy and battery juice to stay stabilized, so the battery life wouldn't be as long, and then it would return to base, which has batteries and respond. You know, going to West Marin would not be an option for a drone's first responder, we don't have that footprint, and it's not within the FAA-approved zone for our jurisdiction. I think that was all of them. I, I'll just offer one more thing in response to the questions. In this proposal, or the proposal to procure this new equipment, is in kind of direct reflection of the council's strategic objectives for the next three years, leveraging technology to do our job more effectively, minimizing response times. As a couple of, of several specific strategic objectives that the council has identified is part of why we're making this request, so I'll offer that. And I'm not sure, did you want to offer some comment, Christine?
Yeah, thank you, Chief Spiller, and thank you, Lieutenant Everly. I just, I wanted to mention that when Chief Spiller brought this to me, I shared some of the concerns we're hearing from the community and the council as well, and I think I feel incredibly confident in this chief and the recommendation he's bringing forward about this program and what it will do. I was going to mention the strategic objectives, which I think is a critical alignment piece. I was lucky enough to see a really in-depth demonstration of the technology and pose some difficult questions to the, to the vendor about privacy and what this is and what it isn't. I think from my perspective as your city manager, our ability to increase the capacity of the police department is significantly limited by the limited resources that we have, and we're always looking for ways, technology is one of them. We're not looking to replace humans, we're not looking to use this technology to reduce staffing, but what it can do for us in this response time is, I mean, it's a life-saving technology. This is really truly about saving lives in the community and saving lives of our officers, and that safety is like, safety first all day long. So I just wanted to mention that I think this is a really important thing to be doing, and I, and I have full faith and trust and integrity of this chief and the department to use this tool as a true benefit to the community.
Thank you, thank you for that. I will, we turn it to my council colleagues to comment, and then we'll take a vote. I'll start with the vice mayor. Any comments, please?
The questions have been raised and answered. It appears to be a, an efficiency enhancement that will enhance the safety of our community. I support the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember Mica, any comments?
Yes, I, again, I want to appreciate the well thought around drones, because I, I feel that there was some controversy, but also I'm very familiar with both of San Rafael, a lot of the residents that they've been asking for years for cameras, they really want to have cameras, and I think this would be like a great tool, to be able to be right there, being effective. Again, I want to appreciate the PAC committee, everybody who attended those meetings, and, you know, they were like great questions and great answers as well, so I look forward to seeing in, in practice and see what improvements we can make, but thank you. I, I definitely support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill, comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Lieutenant Everly, for the report, and Chief Spiller for supporting comments. This is tricky when we deploy technology. I think that, you know, for folks who are familiar with seeing an officer arrive, there's a, there's a, it's the embodiment of, of the human factor, and I respect community members who are skeptical when we deploy technology that would seem to be in place of humans. That said, I am persuaded, based on testimony this evening and having watched the police Advisory and Accountability Committee meeting, that this is the right thing for our values and what we need to do for our community. I do think that this will save lives not only for community, community members, but also save lives of our officers and first responders. I think that the guard rail, rails are smart, I'm glad that we're not on the bleeding edge of this, I'm glad other communities have gone first to help us refine our policy. I'm specifically encouraged that we are, I think you used the term, Lieutenant Everly, camera up on, on route, and I think that, that limits our ability to either do pretextual or happenstance behavior, I think that mitigates. I think that mitigates, in my opinion, the notion that this is a surveillance device. I think it has the opportunity to be that, but I think that we are being very specific in our policy and our implementation to avoid that scenario. I'm also encouraged that we are implementing the same policy that we are doing for our automatic license plate reader, which is 30-day expungement of data and that there would have to be a reason to look at video beyond just, and again, it's for the investigation itself. So I will be supporting this and look forward to ongoing reports as refinement needs to happen. I know that question did come up. But as my comment is that if there are major amendments that need to be made to the policy, I think it would be great for this council to receive that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. I also support the moving forward with the drone program. And I really appreciate the work that was done with the PAC committee and the involvement around the policy development and having, not going in pre-assuming what that outcome's going to be, but really being open. And I watched bits and pieces of the meeting and it's great discussion. And I encourage others to be part of that program. I see this as a tool. This is a tool that we now need to take on. And as has been mentioned, we're not the first. I don't know if we'd say we're not the last, but we're right there. And so I see it supporting our community. It's also, it's supporting the police department. And anytime there's a tool, I think we need to look at, you know, the opportunity to take advantage of that. I'd also thanks to the department because I feel like we're very lucky that you've brought something to us because many, I don't think, have that opportunity for us to even consider this conversation. And I think we've put a lot in front of you over the years of de-escalation techniques and implicit bias awareness and cultural competency and body cameras and it goes on and on and on. And I appreciate that, you know, bringing this tool forward really will help our community and help the department. And I know right now you're not looking at it as being a proactive, used in a proactive situation, but maybe down the road, we might consider that as an opportunity as well.
Thank you. Excellent comments. And thank you, Lieutenant Everly, for that great presentation. And thank you, Chief, for, in your comments, stating the importance of community trust. And we all wish we lived in a world where we actually didn't need the police at all. Nothing personal, of course. But so, and I agree with Councilmember Kurtz talking about it, an additional tool. And 10 years ago, we couldn't have imagined it other than what we saw in movies. And I think what we're rethinking about or reframing, that's not what we're talking about, what we saw in the movies 10 years ago. We're talking about a tool that has been said over and over will save lives. And I was thinking back to when we first started talking about the automated license plate reader, and there were some similar concerns and comments. And we already know how effective that is being. We know that the number of cars being stolen in San Rafael is drastically reducing. So it's making our community safer. So thank you for looking at the policies that the city council wants in terms of safety and everything that you just mentioned and finding a solution that meets those policy objectives. So thank you. Excellent. And also thank you to the PAC. Thank you, Vice Chair Dariush Davidi for coming in and representing the PAC. They did big lifting on this prior to the council hearing this evening. So I would entertain a motion on this item.
I'd like to make a motion. I make a motion that we adopt a resolution renewing the ordinance. Oh, yes, renewing the ordinance approving the San Rafael Police Department military equipment use policy 706 and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Flock Group Incorporated for the lease and installation of two unmanned aerial systems, UAS, or drone as first responder, DFR, for a 36-month term in the amount not to exceed $500,000.
Second? Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Edens Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries five zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next agenda item is a three-year strategic plan for fiscal years 2025 to 28 and performance metrics. I see Assistant City Manager John Stefanski, oh, and Assistant City Manager Angela Robinson-Pino joining us. I will turn it over to you.
Mayor Kate, I'm going to kick us off on this one.
My apologies, City Manager.
As John gets the PowerPoint up. So I'll just start us off in framing what we're here to do this evening. We're very proud to present the city council's three-year strategic plan for the next three fiscal years, 2025 through 2028. This is our comprehensive roadmap that will guide our city's priorities and our investments over the next three years. Excellent. So here's a little overview of the presentation. And we're going to talk a little bit in the beginning about this new strategic planning process. There's a couple of new things in this document that you haven't seen in prior years. There's a message from Mayor Kate describing the strategic plan and its purpose and role in our governance. There's a vision statement from myself, which was developed and drafted as hearing all the feedback from the council and the community over the last six months as we've been in this process. John and Angela are going to join me in the presentation and they're going to be presenting the areas of responsibility, their scope of responsibility in the strategic plan. So I'm going to start off and cover mine as well. I just want to apologize in advance that I am going to forget to thank somebody. I could sit here like for an hour and tell you all the people's names who contributed to this plan, but we don't have time for that. So I want to acknowledge the tremendous effort that's gone into this. It's been quite a heavy lift and investment. The document really has been across the board. It's the executive management team, all the directors here, the mid-managers and staff, all levels of the organization contributing to this and as well as the community and the council. This was Assistant City Manager John Stefanski's lead project on this. So I want to recognize him as well as Angela Robinson-Pino for her work and efforts on this. Sean Mooney, who makes everything look beautiful, also has a lot of substance in here too, not just the pretty pictures. So I want to thank Sean, Director of Open Government Digital Service and Product Manager Vetika Ahuja, who could be here with us tonight, but has done like mad, incredible magical work on the performance metrics that we're really proud and excited to present to you this evening. I also want to thank the team. Oh, Walter Gonzalez, our management analyst, did a ton of work on this. Jacob Green and Associates, who is our partner in the development of this, and Jacob himself as well as his team, who have been really critical in our success. So I also want to acknowledge the mayor and council for your leadership and your willingness to trust me as your city manager to shift and evolve our approach to strategic planning. As you know, we had your annual council retreat back in December of 2024, and we brought this new approach to you and had a really great conversation. And marching orders were, yes, go forth and do that. So here we are tonight to present you the three-year strategic plan. Okay, why the new approach? Do you mind just a little? Thank you. So there's three or four kind of main purposes or reasons why we pivoted in our approach. One is we felt like it's really, really important to have this prioritization tool that we set out on a path. There's our roadmap. Here's what we're going to do. But as we know, things change as we go. And so we've got to have a way that's transparent, open to the public, to talk about and get guidance from the council on where do we shift and reprioritize. Alignment. So Jacob Green's model comes from a place of saying the most successful government agencies have alignment between the community and the council and the staff. And everybody is working together to accomplish that and there's real clarity. We also have done a lot of work, and I want to thank Paul and his team on integrating the budget. So really tightening up the alignment of our resources with the things we say we're going to do so we can make sure we say we're going to do it and we can deliver it with the resources we have. We also did some work to connect the strategic plan with our already existing planning documents. So we've got a ton of to-dos in the general plan, 2040 and the housing element and other plans, and we wanted to make sure that there was alignment there. And then transparency and accountability, that measuring progress and showing what we're accomplishing and having some real data so that we can share with the community that we are making data-driven decisions, not arbitrary ones, and having that public performance dashboard so that the community at large can really keep track of how we're doing. So I mentioned the council retreat already, and then our executive and management staff got together and did some workshops to try to develop these seven new priority areas. Previously, we had nine and a couple of different categories of goals and objectives. And so we integrated and merged them for the sake of having them be a little bit more simple and easier to report and track progress. On March 3rd, there was a city council study session that we brought the first initial draft of the strategic plan to the council, and we had a great, robust conversation. Staff then did some refinement. We also incorporated input from the community. And then on May 5th, there was another city council study session to do kind of the final revisions and refinements to the document. So this wasn't just these study sessions. This is a collective community input and staff considering and thinking about all the community engagement efforts that we've had over the last few years. And what we're hearing is really the most important thing to the council and the community. So three-year strategic plan. The purpose of this plan is really to provide high-level policy direction and a framework. So as policymakers, the city council and mayor are telling us at a policy level, this is what you want us to accomplish. We've got seven priority areas, 26 goals, is that right, John? 26 goals and over 100 objectives across these seven priority areas. Just to highlight, so we've got this level of detail here for you this evening. If the council adopts the strategic plan, what staff then will do is go work on an individual work plan that will be, you know, foundational underneath each one of those seven priority areas. And that work plan will be focused on what we would aim to accomplish in the next fiscal year. So July 1 of '25 through June 30 of '26, we would set out and really start identifying what are the things that we think we can accomplish in this next year. So I wanted to take a moment also throughout this presentation, you're going to hear a lot about accomplishments and the things that I cannot tell you how proud and amazed I am at this team for what we've accomplished in the last couple of years. So it is really important to pause and celebrate our wins. And, you know, there's a lot of ways to do that, but tonight is a culmination of a lot. There's also, I had a great conversation with one of the council members who will remain unnamed. And their question to me about this was, well, what haven't we done? I mean, we've done all this stuff, but what haven't we done? And I think in the spirit of this new strategic planning process, one of the things that's really important for us to convey to you, for me to convey to you and to the community, is that we're not going to get all the things done in our roadmap. And that's to be expected. And part of where we talk about needing a tool for reprioritization is there are, in our business, we can't control the environment. And there are things that come upon us in our line of business as a city that we have to respond to in an urgent way. So we have unfunded mandates. Those things come down from the state and other agencies. We have new funding and grant opportunities. So we've got to pause and say, okay, if we can get a $5 million grant for this thing, do we pivot? Because those resources don't come about very often. Emerging community and council priorities, things are and do come up over the years. So kind of going back to the top of the slide, this year we've had a significant uptick in health and safety issues in our community. Illegal food vending, illegal fireworks, illegal hemp and cannabis. None of those were issues that we anticipated or had, you know, really talked about in our, in our goals and objectives. They're in there, but the amount of time and energy and focus staff needed to put aside other important priorities to address these is part of the challenge we have. So we need this tool to come to you and the community and say, if we're going to do this new stuff over here, then we're going to tell you what we're not going to be able to do or what's going to have to get pushed off or phased out a little bit longer. Another kind of the why, some of the things don't get accomplished. And I would say these are specific to the last couple of years, but they ebb and flow in our episodic in all local government. We've had significant vacancies, significant, you know. So when you have a planning department that's short, three planners out of four or five, and with a great resignation, you know, we've talked a lot with you about our compensation increase to address and make sure we're recruiting and retaining top talent. We've been very successful at that, but there was a period of time where we were really struggling with capacity. The amount of development applications, speaking of planning, has way exceeded our expectations. We knew it was coming, but the 800, 900-plus and continuous applications coming in the door, it's a great problem to have, but it has a really significant impact. And those have time clocks. There's legal mandates. We can't just say, oh, we'll put that one off. And we want to be really responsive. So I wanted to take like a quick two minutes just to give you a couple of examples and contextualize the handful. I just want to say one more thing, and I want to say this to the community and the council and my staff. Success doesn't look like we finish all the things that we say. We cannot, our job is to do everything that we possibly can, but then to come and ask for policy direction when these new things come up. So I'm not pointing these things out because anybody didn't do a great job. I mean, this is 90% of what we set out to do has been accomplished, and that is incredibly remarkable. So I was talking about the community and economic development department having some short staffing over the years and a lot of turnover in the leadership of the city as well. So the transit occupancy tax and tourism-based improvements, that's something that we've been wanting to work on for a long time. I would say that the health and safety issues that came up in this department absolutely needed to take priority over getting that done. Everything that we haven't been able to accomplish in totality or that we haven't been able to start is rolling over into this new three-year strategic plan. So they will not be forgotten and they will be, it will be continued. So just a couple other quick examples, interim shelter around homelessness. We're working with the county right now. That's been a real challenge to try to find the funding and the right partners. And so that's going to be a continuous effort. Existing tenant protections is another area that the staff has worked really, really hard on. And there are some things that are happening in the community that are making other, again, health and safety priorities and prevention displacement. We came with an urgency ordinance on temporary relocation. That was a priority for the council and the community over continuing the tenant protection evaluation. Okay. Just a couple of quick more as an examples. Maybe that's enough. So priority development areas, that's on our goals and objectives and continuing those in southeast San Rafael and North San Rafael have begun. So a lot of this isn't, did we do it or did we not do it? We started a lot. And again, things will get deferred and phased in over time as we need to address other emerging priorities. So I wanted to take a moment and appreciate and acknowledge the things that we have done and the things that we are continuing to do. Okay, so here's the meat. Priority area A is economic development and neighborhood vitality. You've got this, like this beautiful document in front of you and it's in the packet. So, and we're not going to read every single goal and objective to you this evening. So, but we, what we heard in the city council study sessions is some specific objectives that the council members really wanted us to be prioritizing for fiscal year '25, '26. So we're just going to mention a few of them. We're continuing to work on attracting new businesses and Director Hinkel and his team have done a remarkable job with the San Rafael Go program. So that work will continue. The council's asked for some focus on transforming city gateways and public spaces to enhance civic pride, enhancing neighborhoods to be resilient, diverse and vibrant places to live, work and visit. That's very aspirational, but you'll see the work plan coming forward in this fall. Specific examples of specific projects to accomplish that objective. And then modernizing the city's land use in a regulatory framework to facilitate more development and growth. Next slide. Priority area B. I'm supposed to do the goals, I'm supposed to do the accomplishments now, right? No. No, no, no. I think I'm supposed to do the accomplishments for economic development. So apologies. So for '23, '25, just a quick reset. We have updated the city's objective design standards. We've developed the East San Rafael specific plan using the city's inclusive resident engagement philosophy. And we're collaborating with the community and the Canal Alliance to ensure alignment with their community vision plan, the New Astro Canal, New Astro Futuro Plan. So let's focus on the priority area B next. Mobility and infrastructure. Develop and maintain an integrated multimodal transportation network that serves users effectively and safely. And April and her team have done a ton of work with a bicycle pedestrian plan, and these will be projects and initiatives that are reaching towards our Vision Zero goal. Enhance transportation, safety policies and traffic management systems. Implement systems and programs that address deferred maintenance, which we talk a lot about in the context of budget. Again, Director Miller's done a ton of work developing our asset inventory, really trying to assess the needs so then we can come up with funding strategies to address those unmet needs. Assess and improve stormwater infrastructure. This is a, a big one because it's got a huge dollar amount attached to it. So that's something that we'll be working on. See? Quality of life, safety and wellbeing. That's a lot of words on a slide. So fire and EMS. Evolving community needs through increased engagement, training, innovation. We just heard about the first responder drone. Enhance community safety. Overall, I think that first responder increasing response times to priority one calls is going to be really critical to accomplishing that objective. Measure P implementation. We had a citizens initiative as, as we know, that was successful this year. And so we have this opportunity to build the state-of-the-art, amazing community center and library at Albert Park. So there's a ton of work and then also working to identify adaptive reuse options for the Carnegie Library. Delivering diverse recreational and literary programs, which we do an amazing job at. But there's going to be some look at evolving and meeting community interests, kind of meeting the moment where we are now. And then this reducing nuisances has also been mentioned as a key priority. And that strengthening that code enforcement program and that team to really be able to respond. Echo Mayor Kate's appreciation for the code enforcement team and their ability to pretty much drop everything and go out in the evening and really take on that enforcement in an urgent manner, which is critical to our success.
All right. So I'll take priority area C. So this is our sustainability and resilience priority area, which seeks to foster a resilient community through climate adaptation, sustainability, hazard mitigation and emergency preparedness efforts. And the key goals for this priority area are to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from both community and municipal sources. Strengthen community preparedness for earthquakes, wildfires, flooding and sea level rise, all those casual things. As well as a goal to enhance community capacity to prepare for and to respond to those emergencies and natural hazards, but also to enhance the staff capacity for us to serve in our roles for our emergency response. And I'll just call out that within these goals, there are a number of objectives, but you know, a couple of note is to develop a plan to expand EV charging infrastructure and begin transitioning the city's fleet. As well as continuing the implementation of the wildfire action plan and evaluating the need for revisions, including placing an emphasis on zone zero, as we've just done zone zero work around City Hall. For priority area D, housing and homelessness. You know, this is an area that's focusing on enhancing and, whoops, I'm going under your talking points, Christine. Focuses on facilitating new housing development, as well as assisting ensuring housing stability and supporting the housing first model and implementing strategies that reduce homelessness. And so the three goals for this priority area. One are to collaborate with partners to implement comprehensive strategies that prevent and reduce homelessness. Advance the development of new housing across all affordable, all affordability levels to meet RENA requirements and implement housing policies that promote fair housing practices and diverse housing communities. And so for this one, just some objectives to call out is, you know, exploring implementation of a housing-focused interim shelter program, developing a homeless strategic action plan and analyzing state housing laws to find ways that we can streamline our local policies here to remove barriers to housing development, to quote a council member, build baby build. So with that, I'll hand it off to Angela.
All right. Good evening. And so we're on to priority area F, which is high-performing government. Or as we like to say, back to basics. This area focuses on, focuses not only on back to basics, but on innovating by implementing forward-thinking solutions, delivering exceptional services that meet community needs equitably, transparently and efficiency, efficiently, excuse me. So key goals under this area are to establish metrics for data-driven decision-making and process improvements. Innovate city systems and operations to improve service delivery. Implement comprehensive financial strategies for fiscal sustainability. And lastly, develop programs to enhance workforce diversity and employee engagement. So some priority objectives in this area include creating annual work plans, which Christine spoke about earlier. Evaluating and implementing technology solutions like AI to streamline and improve internal and external processes. Creating a citywide strategic communications plan and developing a timeline to renew existing tax measures requiring voter, voter approval. And now on to priority area G, equity, access, belonging and opportunity for all. This final priority area focuses on, focuses on creating equitable outcomes and addressing systemic conditions of injustice. And so key goals under this area include developing accessibility standards across all city operations, and most notably with through our ADA transition plan. Increasing community involvement in local governance by fostering inclusive engagement and ensuring all planning efforts and public investments are inclusive and community-informed. And so under this area, some priority objectives to highlight include developing inclusive, inclusive resident-led community engagement program. Evaluating and revising the ADA program and policies as necessary. Developing and implementing the city's language resource access plan and developing a strategic roadmap to guide the city's work to achieve equitable outcomes. And with that, I believe we'll be handing off to Director Mooney to provide a report on our performance metrics for this plan.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm pleased to be here and I will try to be as concise as possible to review some of these metrics with you all. As you all are aware, our performance metrics program was established a few years ago. And a number of metrics were selected in 2023 to help measure against our, our previous goals and objectives document. And we've updated in the last year and both added a few metrics and we've updated for most recent figures. I think the key thing to understand before I, as I look, open this up is that while we have presented to you a number of new different priorities, that the metrics that we're going to look at reflect the previous strategic goals and objectives. And a special thanks to both Vetica, Ahuja and Sherman Pang for their work in developing this. Oops, so that is the wrong spot. Let me just. All of this information is readily available on the city's website. And so I'm not going to dive into all of them, but I'm just going to highlight a few of them. Is it not, is it not? Okay, thank you.
He's amazing with technology.
Thank you. Are we seeing it now? All right, okay, let's, 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 let's try one more time now here. Now let's see if we can.
It's there, Director.
It's there and then.
Yeah.
But it's not showing that.
There it is.
All right. See, you know, you just click a few buttons and the technology starts working. Okay. So as you can see now here at our performance dashboard, this is reflecting the previous goals and objectives, which included the economic growth, diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, sustainability, climate change and disaster preparedness and housing homelessness. We've also included some operational metrics. So just looking at this quickly, and I encourage all members of the community to go through here. Looking in economic growth, some kind of key numbers that I'd like to take a look at here. One, I think in particular, this has been a conversation that we've spoke about as far as the impact to our not displaying, thank you. As, as far as the impact to our, our upcoming budget is, you know, looking at taxable sales, which is relatively flat over the last year. There's been a, a slight increase overall, increasing from pre-COVID levels, as you can see by that dotted line. One thing to call out here that's interesting is just looking at the, the share of motor vehicle and parts dealers, which is over a quarter of the amount of tax sales that we gain here at the city of San Rafael. Another within, we, we added hotel tax. This is a new metric this year, and we can see obviously where it dipped there around the COVID-19 start of that pandemic and how it has been increasing since then. We anticipate to see this continue to increase with the impact of the AC Marriott Hotel downtown. Now we're looking at, you'll see this number is going up to 2023. Now we've revenue, we've increased our revenue now up to $3,593,000 in the last year. Within diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging, oh, and maybe I'll just show everyone, both at the dais and for the public. The, the, the left-hand side of these performance metrics shows you the key metric that we're measuring, which is in bold, a definition of what the metric is as well as the source. So that can help you as you're trying to navigate this in the future. Within diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, we have a couple of different metrics that we've been measuring. The one that I like to kind of show you in particular is looking at specifically within our workforce diversity. That has remained, you know, somewhat steady as far as like the gender balance. But has, we've increased the percentage of people who identify as people of color over, you know, the last 12 years with, with a significant increase from 2012. What I think is a really great way to look at this data also is how the city workforce compares to the representation across the city. And so that has been increasingly becoming more aligned with the representation across the city here. Looking into our sustainability area. A metric to celebrate here is within our greenhouse gas emissions, which continue to steadily decrease. We are on track to hit our 2030 target. We are well below our 1990 levels, about 24.1% below those levels and continue to be on track. Within vegetation management in that same area. We, the team at the fire department has been working steadily to inspect quite a few households with unique parcels with high-risk items and vegetation and fuels. You'll see it spike in 2023. There was a much more concerted effort for them to do inspections. So that's why it's that much higher. And overall, trying to, the, one of the goals here is continuing trying to both do those inspections and bring them into compliance. And so as we can see here, like within 2024, they've inspected 5,173 properties. And they have about 3,502 of those with, with high flame length. And about 274 of those properties have resolved in 2024, resolved, resolved the issues that were identified on those properties. Within housing and homelessness, the two areas that I look at with the point in time count, which we can see has decreased since the, the last count in 2022 by about six, so see, see it says 6%. Although it is still well above the pre-COVID levels in 2019. And so that work, that work continues and we are awaiting additional numbers from Marine Health and Human Services for the next point in time count. For, for within housing, I think this is a, this shows a remark, some remarkable work that's happened here at the city of San Rafael. You'll see that, that orange line, that shows the arena goals for the city. And the, the top graph shows you the total units entitled. So, you know, we have entitled quite a few units well above our arena goals in total, but we have 1,666 total units entitled with about 1,503 above moderate. We're meeting arena goals with low at 157. And the, the graph below tells the other part of the story, which is how many have actually been permitted. And so we will continue to see how, how that changes. Okay. Finally, I just want to go into our operational metrics. This is something that I think this story will be told a lot more cohesively with our goals and objectives in the future, as we've been able to integrate these metrics and goals into our work. In particular, looking into public safety within the, the steady increase of fire and EMS calls for service have gone up, let's see, 0.7% since 2023 in EMS, but 13.6% since 2019. Within our, what are called Class A, Group A offenses. Here in the city of San Rafael, we're seeing this trend that is happening both within the state and nationwide of a decrease in, in crime overall. Although San Rafael is ahead of the curve. And that metric that Mayor Kate alluded to about motor vehicle theft, you can see in the last year a significant drop in motor vehicle theft that can most likely be, highly be attributed to the automated vehicle license plate system. And let's see here, the last thing I'd like to show you here, well, actually, I was going to, two, two more within the safe team. I think this has been, become a crucial part of our city team. They've had 3,025 calls for service in 2024. And a number of these have been just the safe team alone. You can, you can see the success of diversions. 90% of these have been responded to by the safe team alone. And they diverted 68 people to the emergency room, 103 ambulance transports and 125 people from jail. And the final one I want to show you here, which is, it really helps tell the story of the operational work that our teams do are the service requests through C Click Fix that come to our DPW team at Public Works. Now you'll see that there's a significant increase from last year because that's because they're routing almost all of their calls and emails now through the system so they can be more accountable and they can track those requests more, more cleanly. In 2024, 3,999 requests were submitted through C Click Fix. So there's more, I'd encourage people to go look at those metrics. We will be adding the new metrics and then kind of reformatting this to align with the strategic plan for next year.
Thank you, Director Mooney. I think we need to pull the presentation back up.
Oh, yes, thank you.
And as Sean does this, I just want to mention on page 40 of the strategic plan in your packet. Sean and his team have done a great job at recommending some new metrics to be adding. I think we, the council has asked us to continue to add metrics and build this program out. So you'll see anything with an asterisk by it is a new metric. So Sean can't thank you and your team enough for the incredible work you've done on this. Getting my presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. In the spirit of celebrating wins, again, there's too many to name tonight. So forgive me if I, if I don't say your very specific accomplishment. We felt like it was important to provide that detail in your, in the strategic plan. So on page 41, there's an exhibit there that outlines the key major goals and accomplishments for fiscal year 2325. I'm going to walk you through just a handful that I think are incredibly notable. Sean mentioned some of the statistics, but we're talking about housing and economic development, neighborhood vitality, entitling 1,422 units and the North Gate Town Mall, North Gate Town Square redevelopment. It was an enormous, many, many years in the making accomplishment. We've initiated a plan audit of 25 city and other agency plans to align with that resident-led engagement planning in the canal. And we approved a comprehensive plan to address illegal dumping in San Rafael. We received over $14 million in grant funding for various roadway safety improvement projects. Kudos goes off to Director Miller and her team for bringing in more grant funding in the last handful of years than many, many before, before that significant amount of capital projects completed Grand Avenue Cycle Track, Rotary Manor, Culvert Replacements and the enormous Third Street Rehab and Safety Improvement Projects. Public safety, I think Sean, we, we talked earlier about the automated license plate recognition cameras, the 47% drop, as Mayor Kate also mentioned, in vehicle thefts is incredibly significant in reducing crime and enhancing public safety. Obviously, the establishment of the Police Advisory and Accountability Committee, the adoption of the citywide Parks and Rec Master Plan, launching that safe team and those statistics on those calls is making a really big impact in the police department's ability to respond to priority one calls and other calls that the safe team can, can take on. We hired a waste management coordinator to oversee the implementation of SB 1383 and the legal dumping program. Adopted an updated emergency operation. and the legal dumping program, adopted an updated emergency operations plan, emergency operations center handbook and storm response playbook. We expanded our disaster preparedness access for Spanish-speaking community members by offering classes and materials and peer-to-peer outreach program and secured over a million and a half in grants to support a community-led sea level rise feasibility study. Couple more that are notables. We secured $6 million in encampment resolution fund, round three, in partnership with the county to establish a 50-person sanctioned camping area along the Mahone Creek, Mahone Creek Path. We hosted a series of seven workshops in Spanish with a cohort of 14 Spanish-speaking community members to increase awareness of housing laws, programs and resources. And on the digital side, we selected Tyler Muniz as the city's new enterprise resource planning ERP system for financial and human resources management. Digital services and community economic development and public works are implementing and have implemented a digital permit tracking software solution. And then last but not least, we implemented a stipend program for San Rafael's boards, commissions and committees, reducing barriers to civic participation, compensating community members for their lived experience. So, next steps. So over the summer, over the summer, staff will continue working on these annual work plans for each priority area. In the fall of 2025, the staff will bring those seven work plans to the council also for adoption. We will be talking about how we will be bringing forward what thresholds for reprioritization we will, we will be bringing to the council. As Sean mentioned, we'll be launching the performance tracking dashboard for the three-year strategic plan. And then there'll be bi-annual status updates. So at the point of mid-year budget and at the point of fiscal year budget development, we will come back to the council and community and update on our progress on achieving those goals and objectives and community progress reporting website. So we'll have a, a robust communication tool that's also regularly keeping the community updated on what's up. So staff's recommendation is to approve the resolution adopting the city council's three-year strategic plan for fiscal years 2025 through 2028. And we are all here to answer questions if you have them.
Thank you, city manager. Thank you, ACMs. Great presentation and very high level. So anyone who's watching the meeting or participating, I encourage you to actually look at the packet because there's a lot of detail to those 26 goals and 100 objectives. So turn to my colleagues, see if they have additional questions at this point, not comments, but questions?
No questions, I'll save comments.
Okay, Councilmember Kurtz, any questions?
No questions.
No question. Councilmember Hill?
No questions, Mayor Kate.
Councilmember Iran Skuladi.
I actually have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So I was just curious. And I guess is, like, first of all, thank you so much. It's tremendous work just trying to combine everything together. I also love the metrics. So you, I, as I was looking at the different metrics that we have in there around house preservation, I, I was just curious to say, to see if there will be maybe some new metrics that we can add around house preservation and displacement. And I don't have an answer, but.
We can look into that. I think that's one of those things that's extremely difficult to measure and that we may not have access to that data, but it's definitely something that we can look into.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I, I guess that's, and then this is like very high level. And I know that then we are going to go into like all the details and specifically like year to year. So there are a couple of goals and objectives that I, you know, that I've been following, as you know. One is around the, you know, the, the green zone, tree inventory. And the other one is there around housing preservation. So I'm assuming that is in the package, although it's not visible. So can you talk a little bit about the process?
Yeah, so what the staff will do over the summer again is they'll take the goals and objectives. The council adopts this plan this evening and they will break those down. And they've already, you know, working on their, their departmental work plans. But this is really to kind of roll up to each of the seven priority areas. So they will be identifying those specific projects and initiatives and what phase of those projects that we would aim to accomplish in the next fiscal year. And so those will be annual work plans, one year at a time. And they'll be presented at the time of fiscal year budget in June of every year. So in the fall, that's when you'll see that specific feedback reflected in. And what we'll be offering is what we've heard, what we've heard from the community and you, and what resources we have to achieve how much of that particular initiative in the next fiscal year. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have any additional questions, being that we've been working on this for eight months. So I will open up public comment. We are interested in hearing what you have to say. We have received some emails and letters that this council has read. But we're always happy to hear from you again. And you're welcome, but not required to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everybody. My name is Amy Likeover. I live in Gerstel Park. I lead a group that's called San Rafael Tree Group. And it's a, it's a collection of neighborhood leaders and environmentalists. And I just want to thank you. We've gotten to the point where you have as an objective, something that we've been working for more than five years on. And it was, this was an addition. So thank you very much for having listened to us. What I'm referring to, of course, is Objective A36, which is in the plan before you tonight and addresses the stewardship of the city's trees as specified in General Plan 2040. A number of the people who served to write the general plan are part of our committee and one has passed. Thanks again. We consider it very wise to include adopting a revised tree ordinance, the maintenance expansion and the preservation of our urban forest. We will join, San Rafael will join the ranks of enlightened cities as we look at a tree master plan. And I know that resources are always, in fact, they were noted twice in the strategic plan, if resources allow. I just want to underline, and I'm sure you know this because especially city council members, you're out and you're in the community. This is very popular. This would be a very, very popular part of the three-year strategic plan. You will please the residents, you will please the businesses. And as I noted in my letter to you, the word trees was used more than 100 times in the general plan. This is part of the undergirding of our city. And while we've paid a lot of attention and there's been so much money in updating our infrastructure, you will not regret what you're going to do and I thank you in advance.
Good evening. I'm Bill Carney with Sustainable San Rafael. And we are, we really appreciate the robust sustainability and resilience goals that are included here in the three-year plan. I'm going to look forward to the additional detail in the work plans that are coming up. And to that end, our, our letter does include a couple of suggestions, a few suggestions on each, each of the primary sustainability goals and also some metrics. So I hope that the council and staff will consider those in developing the work plans. Just to quickly go through the ones that really jump out at us in terms of climate goals, electric vehicle acceleration, a big goal, the building electrification roadmap, which is coming before you, I understand, in the fall. And we're really hoping that the council will approve and adopt all 10 of the recommendations. It's a really great plan developed countywide. So those two, and then organic waste composting, which has been in place for a while, the education and enforcement around that is something you're very well aware of and this is a continuing recommendation. Those three goals alone, if resourced and carried forward, could get us to 85% reduction of greenhouse gas emissions in, in San Rafael, which is, which is really great. To make up the rest of that, we'll take some sequestration and that's where the trees can come in in a big way. So, you know, particular attention to that. And of course, sea level rise preparedness is, you know, I really applaud you for being proactive and taking that one on and really getting across the finish line or at least getting started on the serious adaptation work that's required there. So thank you very much for this and look forward. And we are certainly available to work with staff and council in implementing these, this great work. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Kate. Jeff Rhodes, and I'm in the country club neighborhood. I've handed Lindsay a list of thoughts and recommendations. I'm sorry I didn't get a letter to you earlier, but the notion here is perhaps they can inform the work plan as it goes forward. But I'd like to focus on the last two on the list, which I think are of fairly significant concern. And they really address southeast San Rafael. I'm suggesting that we work with the neighborhood's business and residents and property owners to develop a soft-story earthquake mitigation plan for multi-story residential buildings. And this could include inventorying buildings of risks, implementation measures and deadlines for compliance, and also funding mechanisms. I think this is really critical. It's a low-hanging fruit, fruit opportunity to protect existing housing stock and save the lives of many in the event of a major earthquake. Soft-story seismic bracing rarely impacts the living areas of buildings and is running about $10,000 per apartment. This is a tremendous value when you compare it with 800,000 to a million dollars to construct a new dwelling unit. You know, we got to remember the earthquake clock is ticking and this is an opportunity to protect people where they live. The other thing I think we should focus on is working with the canal neighborhood and East San Rafael residents and businesses to develop and implement a flood evacuation plan. We're all aware that East San Rafael can be totally isolated in a hundred-year flood. And fortunately, we usually get sufficient warning to be able to respond to that. So if we, what we need to do is we need to develop an evacuation plan so that we can act in a timely manner and get people and their automobiles to higher ground. We need to remember that loss of an automobile for many of our residents is a really serious problem. And what we can do by doing this is we can avoid what happened to San Jose in 2017.
If you could wrap up, thank you.
Anyway, so that's, those are the, those are the primary things that I'd like you to focus on in the interest of safety of our, our East San Rafael residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, not seen any. I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the council for their own comments. And hopefully a motion. I'll start with the vice mayor.
My comment is succinct. Aha, now I have proof. I've always thought that we had the greatest team. Now I've got proof. This is, this is incredible. As the mayor said, it's taken eight months. There were some times when it was a little rocky, but wow, has it come together. I'm very, very proud of this. And this is a planning document that shows efficiency. It shows prioritization to our community. We're listening to them. We are efficiently prioritizing and doing what we can to meet their needs and deploying their resources that they've given us to do that. And it's honest, you know, those metrics show some things just aren't getting done. But a whole heck of a lot of other things are, and we're ready to show that. So it's a great plan. Can't thank everyone who's been involved enough and look forward to living it as, as we go forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Mica.
Yes, that's a hard act to follow. I, I echo everything she has said. I think to me, one of the challenges is to know that we have so many reports on so many plans and, you know, hearing from the community and just wondering, how are we going to put everything that we, that the community needs and they are asking for? All the plans that a lot of people have been working on for, for a long time and put it all together in one place where we can really start taking all the different pieces and thinking about implementing them and having the dashboard just to show the progress, the timelines. I mean, I think it's extremely well done. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you for all the work that you have put into this. And I'm, I'm really excited to keep the work going and getting more things done. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
Thank you. I, I love plans and I love seeing work plans as well, so going to the next level. The one area that, well, a couple of things. I, I mean, I guess I'm in a more of a pessimistic space these days. I, as much as we love plans and planning, the only thing we could plan on is the fact that there's going to be stuff that we haven't planned on, right? And so for me right now, with where we're at nationally and globally, you know, we were going to have to really focus on the physiological needs and the safety needs around security and safety, stability, protection from harm and food and housing and health. And, and that's not necessarily our, just, it's not the city's responsibility. But I think in relationship to the whole community and all of our service partners, we're going to really need to be looking at how do we support our community? Which leads me to the next comment. And, and I know it's intentionally not built into the plan and that's okay. But we need to really keep top of mind, supporting our older adult community. Right now, San Rafael's 21% of our community is over the age of 60. And in 10 years, it's going to be 40%. And we don't have, we're like sort of the first communities in Marin, especially across the, the whole nation. Marin has, is, has the longest lifespan. And we don't know what everyone's going to need. And right now, the largest group advocating are in their 80s and 90s, our age-friendly committee. And so they're advocating for themselves and, and we all need to be advocating. And I know we do, but as we've been really deliberate in our work around inclusion and diversity, I think we're going to have to be very deliberate in our work in supporting older adults as we are all heading that direction, fortunately, which is great. But I think that, you know, as we go forward and at the same time, with the work that we're doing right now, what's happening nationally again, we're going to have to keep that in mind. So I don't want to land, land on a low note because I think this is great. It's exciting. We have a lot that's happening in the city and we've delivered a lot. And it put, it's put us on this great path to keep moving forward, which is really exciting. And we wouldn't be here, be able to have these type of conversations if we didn't have the foundation that we have and the work and the vision to keep moving us forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you, City Manager Lillovich, and thank you, Assistant City Managers, for taking lead on this and of course, give voice to what Assistant, or the City Manager referred to, that staff, almost every staff member is probably involved in the creation of this. And in between all the dates that you laid out of when we were engaged, I know for a fact that there was a top-down and bottoms-up approach to this to make certain that it could fit inside the contours of the constraints. I also appreciate that, you know, staff want to be very careful about how we make commitments to the public. And that my belief is that the intentionality of this framework and process is to help embolden staff to make commitments and understand that in our dialogue with the community, that as you put it, Christine, that there are times when we have to do puts and takes, that things will happen and we need to respond to those things. And it's not as simple as saying, well, here's what's above the line and below. Because as you said, there are windfalls that can happen. We say, well, that's going to end date this part of staff and we need to, we need to make judgment calls as we go. So I appreciate that this allows, hopefully that folks can be bold in, in helping to make commitments to the community that they can be amended. I also want to call out that there was one, and I thought Director Mooney did a great job going through the, the metrics. I wanted to call out one that he didn't call out, which was that I was very encouraged to see that in terms of composting compliance, commercial achieved 97.7% compliance and multifamily 94.7. It's not at 100% yet, but it is continuing to increase. And I do think that it is the direct result. And I do think that it is the direct result of how Corey Bitoff and all the folks on that team are doing very intentional engagement with the community. So I wanted to call that out specifically. I also just want to share too that this document, I think, reads very, very well. It sets out what the vision is and the approach, and then works further, further into detail for folks to, to look at. I would make a call to action on the community to continue to comb through it. Call out which metrics you think are not valuable and call out new ones that we are not, that we're not looking at. I think that these are, these are important for accountability and transparency. Are our policies working? And I think it was the vice mayor who said, look, there are some we're not great on, and there are ones that we're doing, I think, really well on. So call to action as we continue to develop this is to reach out to us and staff as we make progress through the process. Thank you.
Thank you. And I share my gratitude to everyone who's worked on this. The city manager, the ACM Assistant City Managers, the director's staff, the community, Jacob Green, who guided us in this process as we continued to evolve local government. And we want to do things differently because we want to do things better. And we want to achieve the goals that our community wants us to achieve. And we want to be able to pay for that, which is going to be the second part of the meeting. And I really appreciate that the city manager took time to dwell, not even dwell, I would have dwelled longer, on the accomplishments. Because so often in city government, it's always like, what's the next thing? Which we get because that's, we're here to serve our community. And I really hope that folks in the community take the time to look at the accomplishments. It was impressive, and we've lived it, and I was still very impressed, like, oh, my gosh, they did that. They, they did that. And we don't have an infinite number of people that are doing this work. We have a handful of people. So thank you for having that moment to pause in the past. And then it's really set us up for the future. And I keep saying 26 goals, 100 objectives over three years. And that trade-off is really important. I know you'll be bringing that back in September. We can't do it all. We want to do it all. We want to do it all tomorrow. So this conversation with the community is ongoing. There might be an item in here that you're really excited about and might not be in the work plan right away, right? And so we have to talk about those trade-offs. Or to your point earlier, the emerging priorities, something has to get bumped or moved or phased. And historically, we've been doing this work a long time. And historically, it was always more, 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 adding more. And that's just, it's not sustainable. It's not fundable. It's not effective, and it actually doesn't work. So I'm really proud of the leadership within City Hall, within the staff, to say, we need to actually have, recognize the capacity limits that we have so we can execute. And that's what I see in this plan. It's like, we can do this. These are things that we can do over the three years. And I'm really proud of all that work and the fact that this has been outlined in a clear way and at a policy level. As much as the council likes to do operations, our goal up here is to do policies. And then staff can come forward with the, with the specific solutions and initiatives. So thank you. As I mentioned, we will be talking about the budget. So I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion on this item. And then we will take a five-minute break because this is super meaty. And I don't know about the rest of you, but I need some water, just like, need a moment to like settle. So I'll just put that on me. But I would entertain a motion on this item. Vice Mayor.
I proudly move that we adopt a resolution adopting the city council's three-year strategic plan for fiscal years 2025 through 2028.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Scalotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Three years of a work plan right there.
Get to it.
And as I said, we are going to take a five-minute break. We have the master fee schedule as well as the budget and the CIP, and those are all very meaty. So we'll be back in five.
All right, everybody is refreshed. They've gotten water, they've stretched their legs, and we are all ready for the next public hearing item, which is proposed update to the master fee schedule for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. And I see Director Navasio was here. But City Manager, are you starting out? Okay, this time, Director Navasio, welcome.
My microphone. Okay, thank you, Mayor Kate, members of the council. Got a couple items here back to back, starting with the public hearing to consider updates of the city's master fee schedule for fiscal years 25, 26. This is Agenda Item 8A in the packet. Just a little bit of background, and then I'm going to hit the highlights of some of the recommended revisions that would be in front of you. Again, the city maintains a master fee schedule in order to, where feasible, set the fees that we charge for programs and services in a way to help recover costs and ensure the critical component of maintaining sustainability of our overall portfolio of services to the community. There are some legal restrictions and requirements about what cities can and can't do within the fee schedule. Generally speaking, of course, we have limitations about only being able to charge up to the cost, actual cost of services, with some exceptions. There's also a concept that is kind of throughout the entire fee schedule, which is what is the appropriate level of cost recovery? Not just in terms of the city's ability or what folks are willing to pay, but there are programs and services that, you know, benefit only the folks that avail themselves. Those tend to be on the higher end of cost recovery. And then there are programs and services that have broader community public benefit, and those tend to be the ones where fees intentionally are set to recover some of the costs, but not by any means full cost recovery. I just want to go back a little bit in time. It was back in December of 2022 when the city council adopted what I believe was a fairly comprehensive overhaul and update of the fee schedule that hadn't been updated in some time. The fee schedule kind of gets a little stale. The underlying data in terms of supporting the cost recovery targets become outdated going back a number of years. So in December 22, there was a major effort to review the entire fee schedule, update all of the costs for service data, restructure the fees. And at that time, the council significantly adopted the new fee schedule that I believe is for the 2324 fiscal year that sort of transitioned to the format that we currently have. That also identified, in many cases, the target cost recovery levels that were being set for host of services. And significantly, in doing so and approving that fee via resolution, authorized effectively automatic annual increases, however capped at the inflation CPI based on the identified index. In 2024, following the adoption of the current year budget 2425 last June, about a year ago tonight, we came back in September and did an update of what was then the fee schedules to identify areas where those CPI adjustments were sufficient, identified areas where staff recommended some adjustments that exceeded the CPI, which required council approval, and did some kind of modifications. And so that just takes us full circle to, now we're bringing this item to you tonight concurrent with this evening's other agenda item following this, which is the adoption of the budget with an effort to keep our fee schedule and the fee setting process in sync with the budget, because there are significant revenues that are assumed in the budget document that would rely on the fee adjustments. Also note on this slide that for the last fiscal year that we're looking at and looking at the fees going forward, the February to February CPI index that's called out in the fee schedule resulted in a 2.7% inflationary adjustment. And so that's significant because there's a number of fees in the schedule that either are not changing and/or simply proposed to increase consistent with the CPI, which if that's all we were doing, we wouldn't necessarily have to be in front of the council with the rest of it. But the rest of the presentation is really to highlight those areas where there's either new fees proposed, revisions to how fees are structured, and/or recommendations for fees to increase above the CPI index. The way that your agenda packet is organized, as well as the presentation, there's a staff report that includes sort of just a brief narrative, very high-level narrative of changes within each component of the fee schedule. What's on the slide is just an example. On the left of the screen are the over dozen discrete categories of fees, the way they're organized in the fee schedule, and a sample of current fee schedule that shows the basis for the fee, what the fee is, and the target cost recovery level. So we're going to go through those here next. The packet that you have, it is available to the public, includes as an attachment to the staff report essentially a clean copy of the fee schedule as proposed. And then to assist in tonight's discussion is a red line copy behind that attachment to the report that actually highlights the changes that are reflected, again, in that clean schedule. So with that, I'm going to just go through highlighting changes. I think I've recovered information on this slide, which is no council action is required when there's no change or change consistent. It should say 2.7%. That's this year's CPI. What it does require council action is the increases above CPI and new fees. There are a number of categories that we probably won't spend a lot of time on, where again, there's either no fee adjustment. They're shown here. Most of the fees within our general services category, library services, and vast majority of public works fees, as well as sewer and drainage. And then areas where all that is proposed is the sort of automatic CPI increase. So now we're going to go through the areas where there are proposed changes, either to the information in the fee schedule or the fees. The first one for police services, I would note, is not really a change. What we're doing in this section of the fee schedule is merely bringing into the fee schedule rates that are currently in place for our towing fees that are kind of administered with the parking services/PD. And so in here, we're bringing in, excuse me, both the current fees and the adjustments to the fees. But the towing schedules, I believe, were not previously in the fee schedule, so they were incorporating that into the document. And again, there's reference to the attachment with the red line on it. The main change in the fire services category of fees, and this is maybe sort of part two of what was introduced last time. This is an effort by our fire department to essentially move the fees related to ambulance transport closer to full cost recovery. Last year, I believe, they went from somewhere in the 50% range up to 75%. And in this proposal, we were bringing the fees essentially up to 100% cost recovery. This does represent a significant revenue opportunity, particularly for the paramedic fund, which has other constraints in terms of what the taxes can cover. So this is really consistent with the effort to sustain our emergency medical program. And I hope I get this correctly. We have folks from the fire department here. We noted last year, as is the case this year, these fees essentially are charged to insurance companies and where there is a mechanism and non-residence mechanism to recover it. When there's not a insurance coverage on it, we're not going after all of the residents that avail themselves or need the service, but it's really to maximize our cost recovery where there's essentially a payee. Building and safety services, I would say this area and in our planning area, just a concerted effort to continue to move towards a higher level of cost recovery, both given the volume of work, but also the increased costs associated with doing all of our permitting inspections, planning, and development work. So this slide summarizes the revisions, the fees within the building and safety services. Again, page nine and 10 of the red line attachment in your packet. There are a number of fees, again, where there are no changes, also where there are CPI adjustments. There's also some restructuring in the fees. And what we summarized here is where staff is proposing increases above the 2.7%. The valuation-based fees, this is permits where the rates are set as a percentage of the valuation of the underlying permit. And so essentially, we have a 3% increase, slightly more than 2.7%, but it gets us a little bit, moves us further along in terms of cost recovery. We're going to talk about massage establishments is in here. There's two changes that are made that I highlight on the next slide for permits for massage establishments. One is actually breaking that category into sole proprietors, businesses with one to three employees, and businesses with four-plus employees. So there's sort of a range of impacts depending on that. And then the residential building reports, there was a 7% increase for that. And I think just to highlight the attachment, this is specifically the massage permit that shows that for a sole proprietor, the increase is going from $208 to $215 for a kind of a new category of, from one to three, it's effectively going from the 2.8 up to 300. And for establishments with four or more employees, which was, I think also at the 297, this one is increasing to a recommended rate of $1,000. And this is based on essentially the work involved and the costs involved with ensuring compliance with the ordinances. And we can speak to that as needed. The planning services fee, again, a huge focus on increasing cost recovery, particularly for the work involved in processing permit applications and development. Essentially, there's two things I would highlight here. One is a recommendation for essentially a 5% across-the-board increase. And the second, we have a number of fee categories within planning services, also in public works and others, where the fee is basically to charge for our actual cost of staff time. And so working with City Attorney's Office, we've kind of made an effort to be very much more explicit in sort of how the cost recovery for staff time is treated throughout the fee schedule, A for consistency, transparency, and also so we minimize the number of interpretations for this. It's basically an average salary for the classification that's involved, plus a fully loaded average fringe benefit rate and an overhead rate of 10%. That overhead rate is also applied to areas where we are contracting out work to a third party and then passing that on to the applicant and applying an appropriate city overhead rate to that. Mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. The red line is a little difficult to follow on this. Basically, it's just being restructured. We had three separate schedules, and they've all been combined into one basic fee schedule for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing permits. I don't believe there's any significant fee changes or revisions within that. They're either not changing or essentially within the CPI adjustment. Next, recreation programs. This is another area that is, you know, kind of highlighted for improved cost recovery. As the council is aware, the recreation program is largely funded through the Recreation Special Revenue Fund, which these revenues are the funding source, and then supported by a significant general fund contribution that we discussed and will cover again in the budget conversation. Couple things I'll say here is staff is recommending a 5% increase to the current rates, although because of the timing of the rec programs and the rec schedules, these would be going to affect January 1st. So it's really getting through the summer and fall and then starting with the 2026 calendar year. We've highlighted previously, and it's worth noting again, that we continue to have in the fee schedule application of the council policy that the programs at Pickleweed and Alborro Community Center are set at half of the rates established in the schedule. I probably neglected to mention, I apologize, but you know, when we're talking about these 3%, 5%, 7% increases, on one hand, the main driver behind that is our costs across the board are increasing on annual basis more than the 2.7% for all the reasons that we're aware of. So what this does is it helps us, A, either maintain the level of cost recovery that is the target cost recovery level, where more than 2.7 is required, and/or helps us move certain program areas to a slightly higher cost recovery level. Within the childcare program, I'm just again reminding the council community, this is an area where, in order to be able to sustain programs, sustain staffing, sustain the quality of the staffing, we made sort of major investment in our labor agreements and targeting, basically providing salaries and benefits to be able to maintain and provide these services. I believe we had about a 9% increase in the childcare a year ago. What is proposed today, going into next fiscal year with an August 1st effective date, is the childcare after-school programs would go up by 5%, which I think is a little bit less than what we had telegraphed when we were talking about this a year ago. And then the preschool tuition and summer camp programs would actually have a 10%. Again, no change in the Pickleweed preschool program, because that's largely, if not fully funded, through grant revenues that are received. And then we note in here, again, the red line will get tricky. There's, historically, there's been different rates set at different school sites because of the class schedule and the periods. And because those have largely become more uniform, the fee schedule proposes effectively a uniform charge for those programs. And here's an example of the sort of standardization, if you will, and again, 5% increase for the after-school programs and a 10% for the preschool and summer camp programs. And I think the city is, it's great that the city can provide this benefit editorial, these programs. And then lastly, we do have an administrative citation fee. This is another example. Just speak to it real quickly. This is for nuisance-type infringements where the staff and council is authorized through ordinance, the ability to charge the fee for nuisance abatement. This has never been actually incorporated into the master fee schedules. This is just another one example where we're building out the fee schedule to be, you know, more comprehensive of all of the charges that we have out there. I think the last thing I'll say here and then wrap up is I did forget to mention that in the area of the recreation program fees, even with the recommendations that are before you this evening, in the budget that we'll be discussing next, there's actually funding that we discussed that's been allocated to do a comprehensive review of the recreation programs and identify target levels and opportunities to better sustain those programs into the future, particularly with all the uncertainty that we've been discussing. So the implementation schedule for the fee schedule, assuming council adoption this evening, most of the fees would now be able to take effect on July 1st concurrent with the start of the new fiscal year. And as noted, the child program fees would be effective starting August 1st. So those are more tied toward the school year, academic year. And then the recreation program, those fees are set on a calendar basis. But since we're adopting the budget, we are setting the fees for the rec program. Those increases effective on January 1st. The revenues that are derived by the recommendations that are before you have been incorporated largely into the budget. I am calling out on this slide that just the emergency medical services, the ambulance transport fee by itself represents about $450,000, because that's a real increase in the cost recovery level, not just our inflation-based. So staff's recommendation, following the public hearing and questions, comments from the council would be to adopt a resolution authorizing update to the city's master fee schedule via resolution. And the schedule itself is Exhibit A to that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I'll see if there are any questions. Not seeing any questions on this end. Question, Councilmember Hill, questions?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you, Director Navasio, for the very detailed rundown. I had two questions that emerged just to affirm what I thought I heard, which is the rec program fee of 5% is to bring us in line. What I, I want to make sure I heard it correctly, that perhaps in the past, we were not keeping up with CPI. So 5% in my own words would be a catch-up and that we might then be in line to do CPI year-over-year for rec fee? Is that an accurate interpretation, what you said?
I would characterize it a little bit differently, and Director Kufa can add or correct me. Basically, what we're trying to do is for our fees to keep up with our costs in order to maintain a certain level of cost recovery. And so again, that's another area where our costs, because recreation programs are largely staff-driven, and so the staff costs would drive it. So when staff costs exceed the CPI, if we're going to maintain, you know, a target cost recovery level, we need to look for an increase that exceeds the CPI. So it's less about getting a higher cost recovery level as maintaining existing cost recovery levels. And the other thing I would note with it is it's not just sort of the math exercise of, you know, plugging the costs. Staff does a pretty diligent job of also reviewing sort of our portfolio of programs, kind of what other jurisdictions are charging in the market, because it doesn't do us any good to set a fee that recovers a certain level of costs and then not have folks participate because they have other options. So it's both an assessment of comparable programs and offerings and trying to maintain our current cost recovery level. And through the fee study that is on tap for next year and is in the work plan and in the goals, we're going to identify where there's areas where perhaps higher levels of cost recovery might be feasible and warranted.
Thank you. And then my second question, because I couldn't find it as you were describing the administrative citation adjustment. What would be examples of some of the nuisances you were describing? Because I saw a bunch of different administrative citations, but I didn't see the, in the appendix.
Yes, so I'm looking at the attachment, page 19 and 20 of the packet. So there's, I mean, administrative citations is a big, broad category unto itself. And then there's lots of examples. So let's see, we've got, you know, sign, you know, violations of sign ordinances, fence ordinances, noise ordinance, you know, obstructions, you know, in the right-of-way, abandoned vehicles. So those are the kinds of things that I think generally broadly fall under this category. And in fact, there's, I'm not sure we were doing much in the way of revisions or changes to that, because those are really ones where you're looking to bring folks into compliance.
Sure, I think what I'm getting at is I saw it redlined, but I didn't see it redlined here. So I don't know what difference I was trying to.
Oh, so the red line honestly is, let's see, that's a good question. I'll look for that. It should be in the very last page of the red line. This is an example where we're adding a fee. So there's not an existing fee. We're bringing it in from essentially an ordinance that authorizes the fee and what we've been charging. So there hasn't been it, and I'll have to check the red line to see if that was, may have been, but.
It's okay, we don't have to do it live. I just couldn't locate it when we were presenting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, Yurant Ghalari?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So my questions are around the recreation fees. And I was wondering, because I know that some, I've looked at other cities, and I feel that with our fees, they are very similar to residence, to non-residence. And then I was just thinking that maybe it's an opportunity to raise, to increase the non-residence fees for some of the products and rentals that we offer as long as we're still competitive for them to come. So I was just curious about that. And I see Director Kufa, thank you.
Hi, Catherine Kufa, Libran Recreation Director. Yeah, so we target a 10% difference between the residence and the non-resident fees. That is standard, you know, each city does it a little differently. That's Nevada, which is kind of our closest market comparison. That's the rate they utilize as well. We do have some areas where it's pretty significantly higher, particularly in aquatics, where we feel the market can bear that. But I think that's another thing that we definitely can look into when we do this cost recovery evaluation this coming year.
Okay, that would be great, because I think maybe it's a way to help fund, you know, some of that preschool gap. The other one that I have, I know that we're not charging fees for the library, which is great. I'm super excited about that. But have we seen like any results from not charging fees versus charging fees in terms of like participation? I'm just curious.
I mean, that's a tough one to measure. We did get rid of the fees for children's materials in 2015, so that was before my time. And we got rid of the adult fines in 2021. I will say, you know, and we do still charge for lost or damaged materials. And you do see that when people hit the, we have $100 threshold is when they're no longer able to check out materials. People really do stop using our services as opposed to paying the fees. So I do think it has a significant impact. All of the libraries in Marin are now fine-free as we are. And I think it is definitely the kind of industry practice at this point.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great service to the community. My last one was around the community gardens and explaining a little bit the difference, because I know the community garden in Terre Linda is much bigger than the one in Pickleweed. So I can talk a little bit about how the fees are scheduled. So I can talk a little bit about how the fees are scheduled, if it's like by, I don't know, square foot per person or, you know, how, and also thinking about like the expenses, like for example, paying for utilities that, that each location has and how are we approaching that?
So it, it's a little bit trickier than just saying like, let's, we'll just charge a square foot fee. As you mentioned, the Terre Linda plots are significantly larger than the Canal Garden plots. On the other hand, the Canal Garden has, is more developed. It has better pathways. The garden beds are better defined. There's a shed. So it kind of has a little, the amenities at the Canal Garden are a little nicer than the amenities at the Terre Linda Garden. So we do, the per square foot at Canal is a little bit higher, but the plot fees themselves are significantly lower. So it's, it's, it's not an exact science, because it's not an apples to apples comparison, but we do try and consider all of those elements in setting the fees.
Great. It seems that is very well thought, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Not seen any addition, oh, I'm sorry.
I did find it. It's at the bottom, second to the bottom of page 23, maybe you found it too, but it was buried there. So it is for the social host ordinance, which I wasn't familiar with.
Thank you, because I was still looking.
Okay. So what is a social host ordinance? That's what I was trying to figure, because I couldn't read it.
Yeah.
My kids are too young, is what they're saying.
I'm, I'm too old, so I don't. Should I take that one? The social, the social host ordinance is one that was adopted a number of years ago to enable cost recovery when there's a response required for a party at someone's home where there's been underage drinking and substance use. And, you know, we have police response and then we have cost recovery. And so it goes to the parents at the home where the party is located. And I would make a note that in discussion with this, with the police department, this is actually not a fee that is often pursued or assessed, but just having it on the books is a tool to help with compliance, a deterrent. Thank you.
Not seen any other questions. I will open up the public comment on the master fee schedule. If you would like to provide any input or have questions yourself, now is the time. And you're invited, but not required to say your name and where in San Rafael you live.
Good evening, council members. Thank you. My name is Fritzi Chanel. I've been a massage therapist in San Rafael for over 35 years in the same office. I'm also a member of the Massage Ordinance Advisory Committee from 2000, presently as well. My issue that I bring up is very clear. The majority of massage therapists in San Rafael are health practitioners who hold to the ethics and standards of our oversight organizations. Yet we have been required on an annual basis to be inspected to make sure that our offices do not meet the criteria for suspicious and illegal activities. Again, I state, we are health practitioners. The fees for these inspections have gone from $62.50 to over the last couple of years, $205 and $208 annually. It's obvious that we are funding inspections that do not dignify our profession. Recognizing that this is a complex issue and reason because San Rafael wants to weed out illegal activities using the umbrella of massage, I request that the council review the current ordinance and practice of inspecting massage therapists annually, profiling as engaging in suspicious activity that need annual oversight. Our massage committee would be happy to assist in, in that account. You can't be serious. Okay, there's a code, two codes that need to be changed. One, a business license that is massage parlors, that's the title. Two, the, the code that says offices of practitioners, health practitioners, not classified, not elsewhere classified. That's appropriate and respectful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And the extra time.
Yes, thank you for your suggestion. Anyone else want to provide comments on the master fee schedule?
Hi, Jonathan Frameter. I'm working with Fritzi and Rhonda. I appeared for you a while ago questioning the expense of the consultant to check on the business, businesses who have license to run a massage establishment. Chapter 10.9 of the code bashes together the regulation of massage outlets with a forlorn and hopeless attempt to prevent massage as a front for prostitution and related activities, related activities. A subsequent look at the invoices that Lindsay showed me really shows no progress in stopping sex work. The ordinance, as written, is more than foolhardy. It overburdens a consultant who's here only one day a week. The sex industry is much larger than you think, than you think. You don't regulate the streetwalkers out on Medway and Front Street in the canal. You're wasting public funds. One solution, remove the second clause after the sex work, because its false presumption crushes the entire massage industry and worse. In effect, all health practitioners, practitioners in the industry are actually paying the city to violate their privacy rights under the Fourth Amendment, because they can walk in when they want. So a final word on the crowd that you love to hate Asian women, those are two protected classes. With the aforementioned presumption that it could be said, with aforementioned presumption, I think it could be said that the city is perpetrating a hate crime. Stop being prudes. Support our health practitioners.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and staff. My name is Rhonda Cutter, and many of you know me from my years of public service and advocacy. And in fact, I began my years of public service right out here as a volunteer concierge at the city of San Rafael in 1999. At that time, the city manager and city council was about to update the massage ordinance, and I was asked to participate in that process. And shortly thereafter, the San Rafael Massage Ordinance Advisory Committee was created. And the committee has continued to work with the city throughout the years, including the integration of the California Massage Therapy Council's certification process in 2015. This strengthened and simplified the city's ordinance and massage program by using tools now available through this revocable state certification title act. Now the city could easily verify that certified massage therapists had a clean record and had completed professional training at an approved school at no cost to the city. The CAMTC is currently under sunset review at the state, and AB 1504 is now moved into the Senate. I request that the city continue to strongly support the continuation of the successful statewide certification system, which is a very integral part of the San Rafael Massage Permit Program. However, we also ask that the city, city continue to support the fair treatment of massage therapists and keep an eye on not overbording us with unexpected fee increase with increases, which is happening tonight. It is not CMT's responsibility to pay for the high cost of running massage programs to weed out illegal actors. Instead, you might consider working with us to make some key changes to your ordinance, which would make it more efficient to run and reduce staff time by not requiring the yearly fees for massage single practitioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the master fee schedule?
Okay, not seen any. I'm going to close the public comment. So we heard community concern around actually massage ordinance, which is adjacent, both of the fees, but also the ordinance. So maybe the city manager can speak to that, because it's related, but not exactly what's.
Yeah, I mean, related to the ordinance, it's not something that we're currently looking at evaluating. I think that's something we could take a look at and, and circle back with the council on, you know, like I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of code enforcement activity in the city and a lot, you know, we're looking at revising our ordinances as often as we can, but the focus has been on illegal food vending and cannabis right now. So I don't have a specific update on our ordinance review, but we'll follow up.
Okay. And we have people who are willing to help provide input from the industry. Okay. Unless there are additional questions or comments, I would come to the council for any remaining comments before a motion by Vice Mayor. Would you want to make any comments on this item?
No, no comments. And when you're ready for a motion, I'm standing by.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
Just a comment to thank those to look at, that you looked at the emergency medical services and bringing that back into, in line. And I anticipate that that, maybe it's an annual review on that one, just because it is so heavy, intensive. But it's good to see that we've had a 22% increase in the, in the EMS calls since 2020. So I anticipate that we'll continue.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I am supportive, as Councilmember Kurtz indicated, of making sure that we can get full cost recovery and make sure we can take advantage of the payer system in a more effective way to keep our budgets balanced. I am persuaded by testimony from the massage proprietors here that we do need to take a look at what is appropriate, what is, what is funding our enforcement program. I don't propose that we amend what is proposed tonight on our fee schedule, but I am interested in making certain that we're more effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yurain Skoladi?
Yes, thank you. I am, I agree with Councilmember Hill. It's good to hear from the community, and I think it would be good to take a look and review everything that is related to that industry. And I'm, I'm, I would love, I, I know this is like a balance of everything that's going on, but I would love to consider in the near future, maybe like making sure that we are kind of like rewarding our residents for using our recreation, and maybe our non-residents can pay just a little bit more, you know, to use our services. So other than that, I'm happy to second.
Thank you. And I'll just thank Director Navasio, as well as all the directors that helped create this master fee schedule and to have it reflect the costs of doing the business. And to have the CPI index, that was a good move with the council, the decision that we made a couple of years ago, it really keeps us in alignment with the actual costs for providing city services. So thank you so much for the presentation, and I would entertain a motion on this item, please.
In addition to the requests from the council members for review of the massage inspection fees, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing an update to the city's master fee schedule for fiscal year FY 2025 to '26 to adjust fees for selected programs and services where fee increases beyond previously approved increases based on specified Consumer Price Index, CPI, are required to meet and maintain target cost recovery levels.
So just to be clear, Vice Mayor, the motion is to adopt the fee schedule, and then there's general direction to staff on looking at the, the massage fees.
That was the intention of my preparatory comment.
Thank you.
And I'll second that. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yurain Skoladi?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Rolling right along, our next agenda item is the final citywide budget for fiscal year 25, '26, the GAN legal spending limit, Measure A Work Plan, and the Capital Improvement Program. And Director Navasio is here. Thank you.
Thank you again. Quick switch of materials. So this agenda item is for the council this evening to seek your approval for adopting the fiscal year budget for '25, '26. I will note that we presented the preliminary budget at the meeting just two weeks ago in some significant detail. This evening, we have a sort of an abbreviated kind of summary of that budget and want to really highlight a couple of things in, oops, I think I'm, did I get to the? So first, as was noted by the mayor, there's a host of recommended actions that constitute the actions required to approve and implement the budget. There's the resolution that approves the operating budget and the capital improvement budget for fiscal year '25, '26. And here we're listing the all funds budget and the capital improvement budget. Also, the resolution incorporates the approval for the authorize staffing level for next fiscal year. And as was discussed, kind of the procedural thing, the resolution will authorize the city, once we get into the new fiscal year and, and the current fiscal year, to be able to bring forward our encumbered appropriations for obligations that the city has made that continue into next year. So that's the carryover of '24, '25 encumbered appropriations. We'll touch briefly on the state, state required resolution setting the GAN appropriations limit and the analysis that shows that the budget is compliant with the, that limitation. And there's also an action specific to adoption of the Measure A Work Plan for '25, '26, and as noted, the update to the three-year capital plan. What I prepared just to go through this is, again, a summary without all the detail that you had two weeks ago. But in the process, I do want to highlight, as I think was noted, some, I would say in some, many cases, some minor revisions between what we presented two weeks ago and what's in for you tonight, and, and just highlight those. So in terms of the, the overall budget, it's, it's before you tonight is a budget of $192,282,000 in expenditures supported by $189,253,404 of revenues. What I'm highlighting on this chart is where we made some slight revisions, so I just wanted to call out some numbers that have changed. And in the next slide, I'm just going to highlight those. In the general fund, we've made a few changes on the revenue side. What this is, is primarily an update to the overall citywide personnel costs as it relates to the salary savings target, which our assumption is 3.5% vacancy factor. And so when the dust settled on sort of our personnel costs, this did result in $107,000 reduction in the general fund budget, so it's $113.248 million. Couple of items across our special revenue funds, this was something that had been put forth, and we noticed that it had not been included in the preliminary, and we have a $75,000 increase in our gas tax appropriation for non-capital street maintenance work. So that's the adjustment in the gas tax fund. The paramedic fund, the city is embarking on a pilot program to respond to certain emergency medical calls with EMT level service as opposed to the paramedic service. We had built in the, and it's fully cost recovered, because these are additional calls in revenue, but we had omitted the $50,000 program costs and revenue in the presentation from two weeks ago. So it's, now it's reflected. And then simply the Measure A Work Plan, what we were reflecting back in May 19th was the $400,000 that's in the capital. There's another component that's in the resolution, the work plan for $50,000 in operating costs in the recreation department called out in the work plan, so we've reflected that in here. The most significant one, and it was, you took action earlier this evening, we were still working on it when we prepared the materials for May 19th. The biggest sort of single is the inclusion of the project for the EV charging stations to advance the electrification of the. to advance the electrification of the fleet with a focus on our heavy and medium equipment at the Public Works Corporation yard. So you took action on authorizing city manager and some agreements. This is the estimated $539,000 capital cost, which I note is about half offset by rebates and grant revenue that Corey and his team have already secured. So we built that onto the revenue side, and we're continuing to pursue other funding opportunities that'll help reduce the net cost of that project to the city. But that was the sort of single and only change in the CIP. If approved with the slight revisions, again, bringing back to you our sort of overall picture for the general fund and the reserve levels, we would, with this budget, have a ending fund balance just under $20 million. And we're showing that just about $17 million represents the 15% reserve policy between the economic uncertainty and our emergency reserve. We're preserving about $2.5 million of unassigned, excuse me, unfind balance for some of the projects that are in the work plan that still need to be worked out, but we're preserving the funding to be able to advance those projects and hopefully leverage those dollars with other dollars that are required, leaving an unassigned fund balance of just over $500,000. Highlighting again that in the budget and the general fund plan, we're contemplating about $8.7 million in fund balance that we would be transferring. This 2.7 is largely the general fund support for the recreation program that we discussed earlier. And then a total of $6 million that would be allocated to the funds listed here to basically continue to put available one-time funding into areas that are essentially underfunded between the liability fund, capital fund, streets and roads, vehicle replacement. Mention again, the assigned fund balance. And so this is the summary of the use of that fund balance in this plan. We went through the capital plan in some detail two weeks ago. The only change, again, to the capital plan is the addition of the $539,000 for the EV charging stations. This, again, is the presentation of our authorized staffing level, is contemplated and supported through the budget of $416.15 FTE. And we shared with the council in the presentation last time, sort of the historical trend of the current staffing level, still below the peak from a while ago. It's kind of fairly stabilized. There's been some revisions between fixed term and permanent positions, but it's largely a flat staffing level. And we have been making progress in filling positions that had for a while been vacant. Again, spending limit, this is a requirement of the state where we have to go through an exercise based on information provided by the Department of Finance that effectively caps each year, based on a base year, what a certain appropriations limits are, you know, absent, you know, voter-approved measures where the voters authorize the city to enact. So this just shows a comparison of historically what our GAN spending limit in the light blue bars compared to kind of our trend of the appropriations subject to that spending limit. Bottom line is our budget is well under the state requirement for the GAN spending limit, but we have to adopt a resolution. And then this gets audited by our auditors. You'll hear about that at your end. So in terms of where we're at this evening, there's a number of actions that are in front of you this evening. We mentioned that, actually, on your consent calendar, you already took action to adopt a series of tax rates for the library and paramedic tax and initiated the process that will come back to the council for the levying of the special assessments for all of our special assessment districts. Took action just before this on the master fee schedule. So you have before you the actions. And it needs to be noted that our work doesn't end upon adoption of the budget. But particularly in the environment we're in right now, we are needing to continue to monitor sort of the economic trends and ensure that the revenues that we're anticipating will be there as well as to sustain operations going forward. There's a lot of fluidity in terms of accessing state and federal funds, in which, a significant portion of which this budget contemplates, and certainly the work plan and the council goals and objectives over the next three years are largely dependent on. And that's going to be a significant effort just to track, let alone preserve, the city's ability to access those funds. We continue to look for ways to address the unfunded liabilities, particularly in our infrastructure and deferred maintenance. And as was touched on at the meeting two weeks ago with Christine and John and their staff, we're putting a focused effort on bringing back to the council sort of a strategic plan for addressing both our existing voter-approved tax measures that have expiration dates at set dates. We mentioned the paramedic tax, while it doesn't expire, there's a cap. And so that's definitely on the, in the mix. But because of the needs, because of the changing sort of economy right before us, we're also going to be looking at what other opportunities might the council have to consider putting something before the voters that either is, you know, in addition to existing measures or potentially could replace them. So we want to look, take a holistic look at that and not just, you know, bring you back a straight renewal every time something is up if that isn't the best option, at least for the council to consider. So just wrapping up, the action recommended this evening is to adopt a resolution approving the budget, the resolution establishing our GAN limit, the measuring work plan, and concurrent with that, the approval of the capital improvement program, which is also a robust three-year plan and arguably has a significant role in supporting the three-year strategic goals that the council adopted earlier as it relates to all of our capital and infrastructure needs. With that, I will turn it to the city manager.
I just wanted to take a quick moment to thank Paul, the finance team, all of the directors and managers who have been working on this budget and a three-year strategic plan. When you look at this packet and the amount of work that has gone behind getting all of, you know, the assessment districts, everything, the master fee schedule to support the budget and the strategic plan, it's an, it's an enormous body of work and a great accomplishment to end off the fiscal year with.
Thank you. See if there are any additional questions. No questions from the dais. I'll open the public comment. If you'd like to have any questions or provide input on this item, now is your time. Not seen anyone. I'll close the public comment and bring it back. I'll say a few comments. I don't know if my colleagues, but I'll go ahead. And I just agree with what the city manager said, that this amount of work, having had the goals and objectives earlier this evening and having this tie it all together, because what we want is them to be supporting each other. If you have the budget without the goals and objectives, that doesn't work or vice versa. So it has, it is not lost on anyone up here, the amount of work that has gone into this and how we have really leveled up our game in San Rafael. So all the other cities in Marin can try to catch up. Let's just say that, because this is really, really impressive. So unless there's further comments, I would request, there are many motions on this item. Thank you, Madam City Clerk, for making sure we get it right.
I'll take the first one.
You'll take the first one, okay?
And with my preliminary comments, our prefatory comments are, if we were a symphony orchestra, the cymbals would be crashing. Trumpets would be blaring because we've reached our crescendo. We are now going to improve the funding and the personnel and the capital to achieve all that has come before us. With that in mind, I move that we adopt a resolution approving the citywide budget and capital improvement program for the fiscal year 2025-26, providing for the appropriations and expenditures of all some set forth in the budget in the amount of $192,282,438 with net appropriations of $163,777,889.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yiran Scalotti?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries five zero.
I'll take the next one.
Thank you.
I have a motion to adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year '20-'25-'26 GAN appropriation limit.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yiran Scalotti?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Next item.
I'll take, yeah, go ahead. I'm taking the third one. I make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the Measure A work plan for fiscal year 2025-26.
Second. Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yiran Scalotti?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries five zero.
I move that we approve the capital improvement program fiscal year 2025 to 2026 through fiscal year 2027 through 2028.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yiran Scalotti?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Thank you so much for all the packed agenda. Before we adjourn this evening, we have open time for public expression. This is anything that was not on tonight's agenda, although we did cover a lot on tonight's agenda. Open the public comment. And you are welcome to state your name and what part of San Rafael, though not required.
Good evening. Thanks, I know it's late. My name's Stephen Friedman. I've lived in San Rafael for about 32 years. I'm so appreciative that the city council adopted a smoking ordinance that prohibits smoking from regular and e-cigarettes, but I've not been able to figure out why the prohibition of e-cigarettes does not apply to multifamily dwellings. I'm here to ask the city council to amend the ordinance and prohibit, as does the Marin County ordinance, electronic smoking devices in multifamily housing. The city of San Rafael already prohibits e-cigarettes everywhere else noted in the ordinance. My immediate neighbor has been smoking in violation of the ordinance, and the secondhand smoke continues to harm my family. My wife and son have asthma, and my wife suffers from long COVID and COPD. Clearly, the city agrees that the cigarette smoke from regular and e-cigarettes is harmful, so amending the ordinance would mean deleting one sentence from the multifamily dwelling section of the ordinance. The physical and emotional toll my neighbor's smoking has taken on my family has been great. As a result of long COVID, my wife has had to quit her job as a county librarian. Our neighbor's smoking has exacerbated her, my wife's COPD, which she developed after having COVID five times. The reality that her heart and lungs have a serious disease has added to her stress. Please do the right thing and amend the city ordinance so electronic smoking devices are prohibited in multifamily dwellings because secondhand smoke from them is as lethal as from regular cigarettes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I'm sorry, I thought the capital improvements project would be a separate item, so I missed the comment there. But anyway, I'm Victoria Dewitt, a 40-plus-year resident of the Weston neighborhood, and I submitted a petition to oppose the closure of the westbound left-turn lane on Second Street at Marquard, being proposed as part of the Second Fourth Street intersection project. Eighty-four people are listed on the petition I submitted to you, and I've recently found out there's 12 more that have been added, so brings the total to 96 on the petition. At the April 21st council meeting, residents raised several safety and access issues with regard to the redesign. We are still waiting to receive a response from the city to address these concerns. Two important safety issues caused by the proposed redesign are, number one, rerouting left-turning traffic from a signalized intersection at Marquard to an un-signalized intersection at West Street. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration data shows total traffic fatalities at an un-signalized intersection increased by 86% over a signalized one. Bicycle fatalities increased by 45%. Number two is the mountable curb proposed to prevent vehicles from accessing Marquard from Second Street is only designed is to deflect errant vehicles and is the easiest of all barriers to violate, according to the Federal Highway Administration. And it will be violated because of the less desirable alternative routes. Your own traffic engineer, Rafat Ray, said at a BPAC meeting in 2022, in response to Dave Rhodes questioning why the left-turn lane was being added back into the design, Rafat said, quote, "This is the most critical intersection design that the city will see in a long time. The return of Marquard left turn was contemplated after we realized that we don't want to landlocked Marquard Avenue and send neighborhood traffic deeper into the neighborhoods to be able to get in and out. This is not a battle of modes. This is not bicycle against pedestrian or pedestrian against vehicle. This intersection, because of its location, needs to accommodate all, and that's where the complexity comes from." We're asking you to follow Rafat's advice and add the left-turn lane back into the design. Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Not seen any? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.